These numbers look familiar.
Just started on Monday.
Your excuse for coming in.
Two extra sets, if you guys want one. Okay, the time is 6 o'clock. We'll call the Southampton Local School Committee meeting to order Wednesday, December 8, 2021. All committee members are present, and we'll start with approval of the minutes of October 13, 2021.
Wasn't there one change that you noticed about that end before? And I think it was changed.
They both changed, correct.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Motion seconded.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So move. Public comment. Anybody wish to address the committee? Step up, just state your name and your connection to Norris.
Jennifer Johnson. I have two kids at the Norris. I want to first start off to address things that were said at the last meeting in November. I was quite offended and taken aback by what Mr. Rogers said at the end of the meeting regarding overrides. I quote, "The other districts have, the other districts you know have populations have been shown to approve overrides when the town needs it. Our population, over and over, says no to overrides. They're not willing to support what we need." So you know, that's the reality of the situation. We put the information out there and they say to make cuts, so that's what we do. The town not approving the most recent override was not the town saying they don't care about the school and their needs. It was the town saying that many years of mismanaged town money and fiscal irresponsibility was not going to be tolerated by constant asking for overrides to continue the same pattern of behavior. Truthfully, approval for what the school needed should have been a separate question to be voted on, and I'm pretty sure you would have had a different outcome. "We all want the very best for our kids and their education. Why do you think I'm here every month?" However, I think the town has lost some faith that we can trust that the money we are giving is going to the places it should be going. I also thought Ms. Tausha's comment about making sure the teachers are policing the masks the kids are wearing to be ridiculous. The teachers are already pressed for time to make sure they are getting through the curriculum they need to cover, checking to make sure that all the masks are the right amount of layers and the material is insane, especially for something that is not actually doing what everyone says it is. Everyone is so up in arms right now about the increased number of cases in town and at the moment, but we just started pool testing in the schools, so what did we think was going to happen? The case count is irrelevant. The information that is more important is, were are the people actually sick and if they have received any doses of the vaccine? It seems interesting to me that we had the biggest, we had the big vaccine bus here just two, over two weeks ago, and now we have a huge increase in cases. I also have an issue with that bus being at school at all. If you want to choose to get the vaccine or any other vaccine, that is your choice, but it should be done at your doctor's office or pharmacy, not in a bus in the school parking lot. I've been accused of inadvertently pressuring someone into not wearing a mask by choosing to not wear one myself. So what message do you think that bus is sending to the kids not lining up in front of it? And why was the school open to those getting the vaccine, but I'm not allowed to come into school to have a face-to-face conversation with my kids' teachers or for my son's IEP eligibility meeting? Those people were choosing to do what you have all deemed to be the right thing, so they get special treatment? I truly feel like everything I say has fallen on deaf ears. This is the fourth meeting that I have been to, and not one thing I have said has ever been brought up for discussion or consideration. However, if I was up here asking you to make sure that all the unvaccinated children and staff were wearing two masks and never allowed to take them off, it would be the first topic on next month's agenda. When does the madness end? Do we have to wait until your terms are up so we can make sure people who actually listen to all townspeople are put into the positions of power? We are coming up on almost a year of having the vaccine, that the vaccine has been out, and there is more COVID in the school than all of last year. Kids are still wearing masks, so please don't tell me it's all due to them being three feet apart instead of six. I know you are all intelligent people, so please try to start looking at information and ideas outside of the narrative that's being shoved down our throats. And if the mask thing is truly tied to DESI, why is no one pushing back when I came and showed you all of those pictures last month of none of them following the rules they are dictating to our kids? It's bullshit. And I'm sorry to use that language, but nothing I say has penetrated a single person in this room. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? This is under public comment.
Okay, then I'll wait through the, I didn't see anything on the agenda, so.
Okay. Circulation of warrants. I know I signed off on them. Did everybody get them?
I think today it said everybody did.
Yeah.
Okay. Announcements and correspondence. Are there any?
There's one from, that was emailed to us from Kate, Board of Health.
I thought it was just forwarded.
That you forwarded. Does that count for, under correspondence?
Was that the update from the Board of Health meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The narrative?
Yeah.
Just give me a second. Right, so there was an email sent on, or shared with the committee on December 6 at 7:00 PM, 6:54 PM, that was initially sent to the building principal of Hampshire Regional, the Norris principal, superintendent, and Stephanie Foss, and myself. And because I received it, I forwarded it to the committee, so the committee would see what I saw or what was shared with me. You wanted to just accept it, or did you want it read?
We could just accept it.
Okay. All right, so we'll just note in the minutes that we accepted it. And then we'll make that email part of the packet when we go to approve the minutes. Principals' report.
Okay, for those of you who were at the Select Board meeting last night, some of this is similar. Our enrollment is the same as it was last month, 470 students. Our part-time math interventionist has been hired and will begin working with students in grades K through 3 who need a Tier 2 intervention in math on January 3, 2022. Pool testing began last week on Tuesday, November 30. Test and stay has also started, so those students who have been identified as close contacts to a positive in-school case have the opportunity to test and stay at school. Parents seem happy with this option recently. Our school nurses are working above and beyond. I said this last night at the Select Board meeting. They continue to work extremely hard to help families and students. They have done their own contact tracing on the weekends after school, and they also volunteered at the vaccination clinic, which was fantastic. Report heads will be distributed December 20. We have a half-day of school on December 23. School resumes after the break on January 3, and our music teacher, Mrs. Lafond, will be hosting a winter concert, which will be online for families in mid-January. January 31, grade 5 and 6 parents will be invited to a parent night at Hampshire Regional High School. The snow date is February 3. The PTO is planning a springtime bazaar, which is exciting and different. We usually have it in the fall. The National Assessment of Educational Progress has planned testing for our nine-year-old students at Norris beginning sometime in February. Mrs. Lukasiewicz is organizing that. It's in reading and math, and we are compared nationally to students across the country. And it's only students who are nine years old, so it's some 3rd graders and 4th graders. And then some of my thoughts, pre-budget planning thoughts. In order to continue our multi-tiered system of support that we have this year in K to 3, we will need to continue to fund our reading specialists. We need additional funding for a reading support position in grades 4 through 6. We currently have a part-time math interventionist in grade K to 3. This position will need to be funded full-time, which was my ask last year. We need to look at funding a program for intensive special needs students. We have 16 students identified as either autistic and/or behaviorally challenged, and although these students don't need the same level of support, we don't have dedicated staff members truly to meet the needs of all those students. An additional part-time school adjustment counselor to support students' social, emotional, and health needs. I'll be looking to fund the library teachers so we can open the library again. Professional development time and money for our reading program that we implemented this year. And making whole the cuts that were made last year, so the nurses to full-time, the school psychologists to full-time. I can look at my ELL numbers to see if we need to increase that position back to whole, or, you know, that's a mandate, so at point 6 right now, we're able to meet the needs of our ELL students, but if we have new ELL students coming into the district, we would have to increase funding for that position in order to meet their needs, which is a requirement from the Department of Ed. So those are just my, since I had written it down for the Select Board meeting last night, I thought I should preliminarily share with you my thoughts. This is not, you know, all-inclusive. So, you know, when Bobby and I start meeting and with the other district-level people on our budgets, these are some of the things that I would like to make sure we try to fund.
Questions? I have a couple, well, at least one question. The part-time math interventionist that is recently hired or about to be hired or start, that was a budgeted position for part-time for the entire school year, correct?
Yes.
So have you thought at or looked at, assuming the money didn't go somewhere else, times that that job's been vacant, perhaps allocating to increase a certain number of hours for that position for the remainder of this year as a possibility, or did you already use the money?
The problem is, is I'd have to look at the number, but because the contract salary schedule is so high at Master Step 1, half of that is what that was. So, and I know what you're saying, like it's prorated, so she hasn't worked from September to December, so it should be costing me a lot less money. It's probably $6,000. So could we fund it?
Qualifies to start off on the master level. Well, master's a master. I mean, that's step one, right?
Right, master's step one.
So we must have, we must have used that as the number of the budget?
I don't know. But we could look at the money and either...
As a possibility to temporary?
Increase her time, right? Yeah.
Yeah. And the other thing is, I think when you look at, I don't know, I think you guys had already left at this point, but there is a survey that's going to be going out to the citizens of Southampton, and the last four questions are about individuals under the age of 18, students. Now, that could mean students that live in town, but perhaps attend Williston. So it's not just specifically Norris or Hampshire Regional or the vocational schools. But in there, one of the questions is going to be, is attempts to solicit feedback from parents about their interpretation of learning loss, and whether or not they see value of an allocation, an attempt for the Select Board to carve money out from the ARPA funds, which can be spent over a, depending on who interprets it, either a three- or four-year period. So that might be an avenue on special needs and things of that nature where you're not necessarily going to get money for a 10-year program, but maybe we could get it for two or three years until we could catch up for this backstep we took in the last budget.
And in order to prevent students to be identified in special ed, but thinking about learning loss, I think the answer is really interventionists, right? So what I reported last night was, we looked at our intervention, our data for our interim assessment fast bridge for the fall, and every student in K to 3 that fell below the line that needed an intervention in ELA in reading right now is getting it. Every single kid, which we've never been able to do before.
But just K through 3?
Just K to 3. So if there is money and parents are, you know, taking this survey and have ideas about learning loss, I think that's where we would try to have intervention for also for grades 4 through 6 in ELA and math. We want to do both.
It might behoove us not to try and use, use general fund money to increase the current interventionist, but use that to fund these other shortfalls you're seeing, and then apply for ARPA funds to make up for that other halftime intervention, to make them full?
Okay.
If you follow me?
Yep.
Okay.
You just said math, too, so I know in here you said that you're going to be looking for additional reading support for 4 through 6. You're going to be looking for math as well?
Yes, the math interventionist that's part-time now and is only serving K to 3, we would like to do 4 to 6. Our math needs don't seem to be as...
That's why I was saying, because it says just reading here. I was like, and where the math scores were lower than reading, so.
And just to follow up, and then I think if somebody else has a question, I'll stop. But at some point in time, can we, can we get, like, whether it's a white paper or the data, I mean, I know we're doing testing, testing's coming up, but at some point during the process, will we actually see tangible results that we could use to potentially justify or ask?
Yes.
Anybody? Dylan?
Yeah, I just want to follow up on this, and sorry if this is a remedial line of questioning, but I just want to make sure I understand this correctly. These tiered interventionists are for any student in the population, not just 504 IEP students?
Not, well, they could be 504. So a student that's already been identified for needing special ed services in reading or math would not be seen by a reading interventionist. They would be most likely getting their services from the special ed teacher. So these are students in K to 3, general ed, who have fallen below the threshold in our interim assessment that need, that need support, and they're able to get it. So teachers in the classroom are differentiating instruction for some of those students, and the rest are being picked up by the reading intervention teacher.
Is there any, if this is off-base, again, I apologize, but is there any indication that early intervention, or not, yeah, intervention at this grade level has a reduction in services later on?
Should.
Okay, so I mean, my whole idea being is that, you know, any way we can pitch this as more of this now saves us money.
It should.
I mean, obviously, the benefit to the kid is the most important part, but what exactly is this, just the line on that?
Well, I've looked at the data, not at Norris, but at like Auntie Dunky with their interventionists, and they did a presentation for me about their DIBL scores and the amount of students that needed services in K and 1, 2. It was a little bit alarming, but after interventions, after interventions were put into place, their scores drastically improved. So the idea is, if we can do early intervention, it'll prevent students from having to have IEPs and special ed services later on or out of district. So the earlier we catch them, the less you pay at the end.
On this topic? Sure.
Do the school have an RTI team?
That's what this is now. We didn't have one before, for years. We didn't have the funds, we didn't have the staff, we didn't have, and so now it's only in K to 3.
Gotcha.
Because before, we have the same amount of people that we had before, but before they were servicing K to 6 and spread too thin. So now we're only focusing on K to 3.
Okay. Anything else for the principals' report?
No, thank you.
I'd have a question just about, an update on pool testing and how that's going with the students and staff. If it's all students that are pool-tested, or if it's, obviously it's not all students, but the percentage of students that are pool-tested, if any staff are participating, just like more, and then if results are coming to parents at all in any way?
I have those in my report.
That's your report, okay.
Nice segue.
And then also, yep, and then, and then one more thing, too, is just staffing, overall staffing with numbers going up. How is Norris doing as far as teacher staffing, para-staffing, and getting subs?
It's been difficult. We've had to have a lot of paras cover for teachers recently, and it's not teachers because they have COVID. It's because teachers' families maybe are going through something COVID-related, or their daycare shut down, or their, you know, things are happening. So it's been very touch-and-go. I had to cover a class today for a few, a little while. Everybody's kind of been, you know, all hands on deck because, you know, what can we do? But we haven't been to the point where we've had to, like, say there's no special today, you know, for, for any of those teachers who might be out, which we almost had to do, but we didn't. Sometimes a para might be taken from their special ed students that they are servicing because now they're subbing for a teacher, which we don't like to do consistently. Now that kids are home from college, or starting to go home from college, we might have more people able to sub. We did put an advertisement on Facebook and on the school spring recently that we were looking for substitutes. So we're always looking for substitutes because we have, we have a few subs, but some can't work Tuesday, Thursday, some can only work Monday and Friday, or things come up in their own families where now they can't come in. So, yeah, I mean, it's seeming to get better now, but last week was really tough, the week after Thanksgiving with all the positive cases. So hopefully it will get better. Thank you. Yep.
Okay. Superintendent's report.
Sure. So we've had no additional guidance about the 80% off ramp in regards to the DESI mask mandate, but what Ms. Johnson did say at the last meeting really did resonate, and I brought it up at a superintendent's meeting with 15 local superintendents, because I do find that ridiculous that those school committee members and superintendents and the Commission of Education publicly don't wear masks. It doesn't change my feeling about that we should wear masks, but they were equally appalled that that had happened. So thank you for letting us know about that. Let's see. So we have had three vaccine clinics held across the district, and over 200 people have attended. So like Elisa said, a big thank you to our nurses and Stephanie Foss, our nurse leader, for their assistance and coordination. COVID cases in elementary school-aged children has increased 70% in November and are major cause of the overall case increase in Massachusetts. And positive cases are on the rise at Norris and at the high school. Student vaccination rates. Hampshire County has the highest 5 to 11 vaccination rate in the state. Our county is at 46%, and the state average is at 25%. And I did ask Stephanie Foss to put together a little report, and on the back, we have 154 students and 18 staff that have consented to pool testing. And last week, two positive individuals were identified through the pool testing, and all pool testing was negative this week. So for test and stay, that would be students who are identified as close contacts. 10 students have been able to access that so far. And according to the vaccination chart right now, for staff, we're at 94%, and for students right now, we're at 11.79%. But in actuality, I think there's only six 6th graders that are truly vaccinated because they have to be two weeks out from their second dose. And we have another 100 or so that have already received one dose. There will be another COVID clinic for first shots, second shots, and booster doses at Norris tomorrow from 3 to 7. School committee chairs, we've had a couple of, we had a meeting on November 30, and then we, yeah, November 30. All the weeks just kind of blend. Sorry about that. So we've been talking about the masking policy, the student safety checks, how they're progressing. We discussed a little bit about the five districts agreement working group, and as I told Hampshire Regional, my big aha moment was at the five districts, when we keep talking about the 66 agreement, I was under the assumption that was the Union 66 Agreement, but as John let us know, that's the Hampshire Regional 1966 Agreement, which are two separate documents, so that shed a little bit of clarity there. We are underway with the district audit for the English-language learners, and Nancy has submitted all the special ed paperwork for that upcoming audit. And we are still looking for CPAC representatives, so that's for the Special Education Parent Advisory Council. So that's really made up of district parents and caregivers of children with disabilities in pre-K through 12. So if that interests you, please reach out to Nancy, who's planning some parent right workshop scheduled for February. We are looking, we are having two things that will help with school culture across the district. A little one is this Friday, we're going to have Flannel Friday through all the schools. And we do have a district logo contest. Any pre-K through 12 student can submit a district logo and win a prize that's yet to be determined by December 23. Any questions?
Questions? So I just want to, I want clarification. So the clinic that's being held tomorrow after school, right, at 3 o'clock, that's the bus, correct?
I believe that's the bus.
It is the bus, but it's DPH, and they're not going on the bus. They go to the library.
So they do go inside the school?
They do.
All right, I was under the impression it was, everything was being done on the bus, and it wasn't.
Originally, when the, that is what would happen, but then given the numbers, they said it was better to have them, people kind of line up, do things in the hallway, be called into the library.
And this is the last time at this point that the state's going to support us with the bus? There was an email?
Yeah, I'm not sure. That's Stephanie Foss's area of expertise.
Yeah. I believe that's what she communicated through an email. So then my follow-up question was going to be, for those that are taking the first dose tomorrow, how are they going to get the second dose? And I think the answer is that the town is hosting one the week after Christmas. Francine?
Yeah, the Board of Health is planning on having another vaccine clinic during the Christmas break at Norris School from 3 to 7.
One will be two.
No, because it's got to be two weeks, right?
Inside. During Christmas break, our custodians don't work. I just want to make sure there's some communication.
Do you believe that's between the Board of Health and Stephanie having that conversation? Or was that from Monday night's meeting?
I, I don't know. I'm sure she'll be brought to the loop.
Okay.
Since the plans are finalized.
Okay.
Is the clinic tomorrow only Norris staff and students, like the first one?
No.
Will they have enough? Last time, I think they ran out of, potentially were running out of.
She has made numerous phone calls to ensure that that did not happen again.
Okay, great, perfect.
And the form has been sent out, like electronically, so that you don't have to stand there and fill out the form before getting the shot. That was one of the kinks in the system, is that, you know, people are trying, they have kids with them, you got to fill out this long form, and it would cause some angst.
Yeah.
Yeah, so just to follow up on what I thought I saw. So Stephanie Foss responded to that Board of Health communication to us. "We're hosting three vaccine clinics across the district this week. The Vax Bus is coming to Norris again on the 9th, but this will be the final time coming out to Norris. I know there are families who were turned away during the last clinic, and we'll be bringing their kids to get the first dose this week. That said, if the town plans another clinic over winter break, looking at December 30 or afterwards would accommodate those looking for the second dose." And then she goes on to talk about working with the Northampton Board of Health to continue things. So I'm sure it's all going to get taken care of. I just think the...
I just want to make sure there's some communication to us.
Well, this is from Stephanie to us.
Okay, you're right.
I guess, I guess my point is, as, if I step away from here and I go over on the family side, I don't think that information is known to the families that if they're getting their first dose tomorrow, at this point in time, there isn't a plan for the second dose. That's all.
We can let her know and figure out how we're going to let everybody know that.
Yep.
Okay.
Put something in the newsletter on Friday.
I think that was my...
Thank you for pointing that out, yeah.
Anybody else?
And just the results of pool testing, are they, is there a portal, or is there something that goes out to parents? Do they just assume everything's normal unless told otherwise? Okay.
Okay, all right. Next is Chair's report. So I believe last week, the chairs met. I did not attend in person, but I did attend via telephone, which is unique. I usually don't have a problem trying to speak up, but with four other chairs running the conversations, I just kind of listened. I just kind of listened. But the, it was all about, you know, just being on the same page with, with the agendas. Making sure that, uh, um, I think one of the examples is on our agenda tonight, the roles and responsibilities of school committee. You know, everyone's getting that, it's just a refresher course. We all should have gotten that training the first year we were placed on. Some of us being on longer than others, um, may not necessarily remember what they, what we were told three years ago. So, it's just a means for that, and continuing to talk about, um, trying to move the, um, or work with the collective committees to eventually, hopefully, have a vote on the five district working group committee, which we'll get more into that when that comes up on the agenda. There was nothing really earth-shattering to come out of that meeting. Hampshire Regional School Committee.
Uh, we met on Monday, uh, similar agenda to what we're talking about tonight. Going over role of school committee, good amount of time was spent, um, discussing budgeting, which was really, really helpful and a great conversation. I'm looking forward to hearing it again, because I think it'll help gel it, um, and getting all that information again. A lot of discussion unfortunately too around, uh, morale in the high school. You're seeing behaviors up there, a lot of it related to, they think, the isolation and, and over the last year and a half with COVID and, and strategies that are being undertaken to help support the mental health needs of the high schoolers, especially, and especially the middle schoolers, um, to help reintegrate into having a, a social dynamic, a healthy social dynamic in school. And we got a great presentation from, uh, Principal Lauren Houts about the school improvement plan that she drafted this year, uh, going forward, ways that we can, that the high school's looking at improving, uh, year over year, uh, especially this year in, in several factors, uh, which was again presented to school committee, or the select board last night as well. That basically covers it, I think.
PTO?
They have not yet, um, yet met this month, they're meeting on the 21st.
Okay. And they, they currently have their, um, gift card program running?
That's the sixth grade.
Oh, sorry.
Gift card then, so.
Okay.
The raffle. Yeah, they have the raffle going.
The raffle.
Yes, 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 yes.
The calendar raffle, all right. Uh, school council.
Uh, the last meeting of the school council was canceled.
I had, so, my personal life, I had jury duty for two months.
Two months?
Which made it very difficult to plan, you know, my life, not knowing if I was going to be on a jury one week to the next. Um, and it ended Monday, so we have our meeting next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday?
Tuesday the 14th.
Okay.
Right?
Need to put it on my calendar, I put it on Wednesday.
You responded to it.
I know, I was thinking Wednesday.
You blocked that.
I'm glad you mentioned that.
Yeah.
I will make that.
Okay.
All right. And, uh, the five district working group, Austin, I think you...
Yeah, that's me too. The last meeting was, um, discussing superintendent evaluations. It seemed like a pretty amicable discussion. I'm not sure what the action items were coming out of that. There were talks of binders, uh, stuff like that, um, but, uh, I kind of got lost in what we were supposed to be doing coming out of that, so maybe Dr. Bonneville can remind us what that is.
I think people's eyes were just like rolling in the back of their head. So, basically, I'd be following DESI guidelines, and we were just talking about, instead of coming with giant binders of evidence, um, I would put it all online, so you can just click on whatever you chose to look at. We were just discussing that, and, uh, I think that meeting went for about an hour, we are meeting again, I thought, on the 17th?
13th.
13th, we're meeting sometime next week. Um, to, to discuss the central office, um, cost slash weighted vote issue.
Yeah, it's Monday at 5:00.
Thank you.
December 13th at 5:00 p.m.
Okay. Collaborative for Educational Services?
Yep, so the collaborative met November 17th. They reviewed the annual audit report, it was reviewed and accepted. The fiscal year '22 and September financial reports were reviewed. The fiscal year '22 budget was presented and, um, approved as a deficit reviewed, and then adjusted with changes to special revenue fund. There was restructuring that was discussed of their business office, um, restructure aimed at more sustainability. Um, they're looking to contract the business manager piece of their business office. They're looking at new locations, they've outgrown the Holly Street, Northampton location. Uh, there's also discussions about, uh, emphasis on a school-based health center in every district, and trying to support that, um, for the future. Uh, co-op approach for health services, bringing it directly, like, to the students, um, and then supporting districts in hiring gaps. So, those are the different kind of bullet points that were discussed.
Okay. Francine, I know it's not on here, but this is where we would hear from the select board.
Okay.
Hi. Uh, first of all, I'd like to thank the administration from Norris School and Regional, um, High School for their presentation last night to the board, the select board. It was really informative, and I think it's really important for the public to hear from you folks, so you did a great job. So, thank you for that. Um, since I missed the last meeting, um, I'm going to bring you up to date on some things that you, you may or may not have already heard, that I would have presented last time in addition to new information tonight. But according to the 2020 census, Southampton has now surpassed the 6,000 resident threshold, which requires that we now have two voting precincts. The east and west dividing line between precinct one and two will be from College Highway to Brick, from College Highway, following Brickyard Road, all the way to Westfield. Both precincts will vote here at Town Hall, but have to use separate facilities. One in the senior center, and voting will also take place in this room. So, that's the expense of growth. That will go into effect for the May '22 election. Some good news, I guess. Based on information recommendations from the Board of Assessors, uh, the select board voted to continue the single tax rate for homes, commercial businesses, and industries, uh, as well as personal property here in town. This is consistent with the tax methodology used in almost two-thirds of Massachusetts towns and cities. This is the main source of our, our revenue. You may know that the, the select board voted last night to continue to, to hold the special town meeting as scheduled on December 14th, it'll be at Norris School at 7:00, 7:00 p.m. Masks will be required. We are planning to have everyone spaced six feet apart. We're following some other recommendations of the Board of Health, which include an overflow room, so that there are not too many people gathered in one space. And, um, to significantly abbreviate, uh, the agenda for that night, just to keep the amount of time that everyone is in that room together, you know, to a, to a minimum. So, we reduced the number of articles from 17 to 5. So, that should, that should help us accomplish that goal. Uh, I mentioned here that the, the Board of Health is, um, planning to hold a vaccination clinic for, for students as well as adults from 3 to 7, so, at Norris School, uh, sometime during the holiday break. John mentioned the ARPA survey, um, to get input from residents about the use of the $1.8 million that Southampton will be receiving. And that survey will be available online, as well as in print. And, uh, we're trying to encourage as many people to participate in that decision, informing process as possible. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Francine. Okay. Next on the agenda is central office budget.
So, I see John made a fancy, fancier-than-mine spreadsheet. So, I don't know if you want to talk about that first, or you want me to just run through what I have?
Yeah, if, yeah, if you want to just go through yours.
So, um, in your packet, you'll find, um, what I have to do first to even begin the process, which is, um, create this assessment sheet. I believe that should be in your packet.
Yep.
And, um, so that is based on the October 1 counts, um, which I received sometime late in October, early November. And then I work out, um, these numbers. And these numbers are slightly different than the ones that were presented at Hampshire on Monday, because there was an error, thank you, John. And the, there was, uh, Southampton had 25 in one spot and 23 in another. So, um, that's been corrected and updated. And when we do get to John's chart, there will be some slight variances, because I did update it today.
And Bobby, just for the, the, I know this is Dylan's first time going through, but can you also talk about how you use these two different things?
Yep. So, the very first block is Hampshire Regional's assessment. And what that is, is based on five-year rolling average. And, um, so each year, one year drops off, and you add in the current year. It's based on the previous year's October 1 counts. And that's how we assess that out. Then the next 1, 2, 3, 4 are the, um, elementary schools. Chesterfield-Goshen is similar to Hampshire, they have two towns. So, that's done a little differently. And then the three elementaries. And then the last box is the superintendent's office, that's the central office. Um, and that is done only on the previous year October 1 counts. And it has a little bit different, you know, it's, um, all students, and it includes vocational students. Whereas the other schools do not include vocational students.
So, the way I, the way I keep this straight in my head is, the first, the first five sections are all based on what the principal controls. And then you get down to the, and that, that oversees the individual schools and how the costs are allocated. And when you get to the superintendent's box, it's what the superintendent controls, which is why the folk students come in. And then that allocation is only applied to the central office budget.
And the difference is, as John indicated, the first five boxes are based on per town, and the last box, the superintendent's office, is based on by school, rather than by town. So, once that's said and done, I can get the salaries to the central office. And so, um, the next few pages will be each school's central office budget. Um, there are some anomalies between them. Um, there's some cleanup that could be done, but essentially, they're pretty much similar. So, if you looked at the first one, which I have as Hampshire Regional and my staff, you'll see there's school committee treasurer, the first thing. That is only for Hampshire Regional and Chesterfield-Goshen. So, the other schools, the three municipal schools, those are done at the town level, and you don't need a treasurer for that. Most of the schools have a school committee contract line, some have a supply line, all have an advertising line, and some have a school committee other line. Primarily, that school committee other line is things like MASC, um, and that's gonna, I would assume, start to be broken out by school, rather than, um, by just Hampshire Regional. And that's something I think we'll talk about on Monday at the five district agreement working group, which will be good, um, and then we can, you know, make changes accordingly. Uh, the next block on this one is superintendent salary. The admin clerical salary, the admin clerical salary is for four FTEs. Um, the superintendent office supply and superintendent other. Currently, that is held only at HRHS and not at the individual schools. Again, that will be discussion, I think, that, um, can happen at the five district working group. The next section is the health coordinator, data specialist, specialist, technology coordinator, and the curriculum coordinator, and then curriculum contracts and supplies. And that is a line that each school has had over, historically. Because historically, there's, each one has a line that is under kind of the control of the curriculum coordinator to use for PD and various things that are necessary for her to do her job. And then the next section is admin business manager, that would be me. Um, and then admin payroll, there's a small piece of the salary. Well, it's not that small, but there is a piece of the salary for, um, payroll that is done just for Chesterfield-Goshen and, and Hampshire Regional. We do do all five payrolls, but the two regionals we do in full. We do the, uh, you know, the taxes and the W4s and the, you know, the whole nine yard. Whereas, we only do the gross payroll for the three municipals. Um, the financial maintenance, that is our software, and we pay an annual fee to maintain that software for updates, um, and for support and service. So, if you have any problems, we can just pick up the phone and call. Uh, every school has a school committee legal line now, um, it didn't used to, but it now does. The next section is the sped pupil service director, uh, sped admin assistant. And then the next two lines, office supply and other, those two are also...
I think it's the heat, not, not reindeer coming through the hallway.
I'm sorry. Those two are also currently housed only at, um, the HRHS budget and not at the individual. And then the last two lines are, um, what we did last year is by breaking out the central office insurance and contractual travel. And, um, that will be in every school. And that will be, this FY '23 will be the second year we've done that. Uh, the next one I have is Chesterfield-Goshen Regional, which, um, again, you'll see basically the same lines. If you go through, you'll see the school committee, um, they have recording secretary. On this one, they have treasurer and assistant treasurer, and that's only Chesterfield-Goshen and Hampshire Regional, as I said earlier. Treasurer clerical, that's a, kind of like a check processing fee, that's only in, um, Chesterfield-Goshen and Hampshire Regional. And then the contract line, advertising line, and then the treasurer travel line. Again, only Hampshire Regional and Chesterfield-Goshen. Then the superintendent salary, the admin clerical salary, and on down the page. So, if you look at like, say, for instance, that second box, the superintendent salary and the admin clerical, you'll see there's no superintendent others or superintendent office supplies. Um, and the rest of the page is the same as Hampshire's. And same thing, actually, for the next six. If you look at Southampton, you're going to see basically the, the exact same thing. Very few anomalies, there'd be, like, for instance, the recording secretary might be listed and have a budgeted amount, but in one school, that might be held under the contract line. So, those are the things that I was saying that could use some cleaning up. It's just historically been like this, and it's hard to find the time to do anything but to keep moving forward, so. And that's really about it for Southampton. West Hampton's going to look the same, as well as Williamsburg. So, that's how central office budget is done. And then, if you go further on, there is a central office summary page. And that just kind of, if you go across each of the lines, so if you were to look at each one of those five pages that we just went through, under superintendent salary, all of those should add up to that salary that's as listed. Same for any one of the other given salaries. What I was asked to do at Hampshire, and I haven't done it yet, is to put a comparison year in here. So, put the FY '22 and '23, which I will do. I figure I'm going to be bringing it back to Hampshire and to you, because I'm thinking there'll be changes coming about after the five district working group. But at that point, we will be looking to get the central office voted, so we can move forward into the other budgets.
Okay.
Anybody have any questions?
So, some of the items, like on the, it's easier to see on the Hampshire Regional page, like, some of the salaries are going down, is that because of the grant funding?
Oh, that's an excellent question, actually. Um, no, basically, what that, that is, almost all the salaries are going up, they're getting the COLA, for their contracts. But what that is, is if you go back to like that assessment sheet, you'll see some, in the central office box there, the last box, you'll see, um, Chesterfield-Goshen went up 1.6, Hampshire down 2.2, Southampton up 0.6, West Hampton down 0.7, and Williamsburg... Hampshire down 2.2, Southampton up 0.6, West Hampton down 0.7, and Williamsburg. So you'll see some schools have a decrease and some schools have an increase.
Gotcha.
So that's why it's, that summary page is there kinda for you to see. And it would be even better with the comparison year, which I will get done.
Gotcha. And that is pretty normal to fluctuate year to year?
Yep.
Or is it every two years that we redo that?
No, it's every year.
Every year, based on the five-year rolling average.
Oh, gotcha.
So you can kinda see which way you're going.
And they're not usually, you know, huge variances, but there are variances every year.
Yep. So, so I took that information that Bobby gave and create, well, there's multiple tabs. I only printed one, one page to try and not have any eyes roll over. But I, but I did the consolidation because traditionally, right? Bobby and her team have done a great job to try and bring this all together. At this level, at the Southampton level, what we would see is just our little piece of the Southampton. You wouldn't necessarily see the big picture of everything. I just knew that we were paying $52,000 for a superintendent and, you know, that's a steal. But, you know, the individual in that position's getting more money than that, right? So if you, going from left to right here, matching up the columns as Bobby has them and hers, and subgroup, and then I went through the process of, you know, the first column's Hampshire Regionals total, then Chesterfield-Goshen, Southampton, West Hampton, and Williamsburg, you know, lining them all up and coming in with it, I hid the column of what that grand total is, but, you know, it matches the front, front sheet that Bobby gave with the summaries. And then said, okay, you know, just based on how this looks right now, what is the percentage? And that's that middle section. So if you look at the superintendent's salary line, 33.68. It matches the allocation for Hampshire Regional, 11.01 for Goshen. Chesterfield-Goshen's fine, 34.38 is us, 7.04 West Hampton, and 13.89 is Williamsburg, at least at the, at the time that I did this. And there'll be some tweaking so these numbers go up a little bit. So that makes sense to me, you know, Norris, Southampton for Norris should be paying 34.38 of whatever the shared costs are. But you go to the very next line below that, the admin clerical salary, you see a deviation. It's small. I mean, there might be one extra item in there that maybe isn't shared across or however it is. But you can see that that pattern repeats itself as we go down through. And the impact is that while the calculation shows, and this goes against us, but while the calculation shows that Norris should be charged 34.38 and in the cumulative, we're getting 30.04. And you adjust for that because of what Bobby was talking about, the Hampshire Regional treasurer. So you gotta back that out, right? So our number is always gonna be lower. But then I go to the far side and I, and I, and I force the percentage changes because I put the numbers up at the top and then ran it through. And where I have the red marked, those, at least based on my understanding, are things that are not supposed to be evenly shared, i.e. the treasurer up at Hampshire Regional. And I, and I left those as they were. I was gonna ask the question, who, who is recording the minutes at Hampshire Regional and West Hampton, or is that just in the contract lines? And that's why those are blank up at that level?
Our new hire for the central office has been taking the minutes for Hampshire. And that's one of those lines where I was saying, so I believe that's actually, there is a line for it, but it's housed in the contract.
Right. So it's not that they're getting the service for free and we're paying.
Correct.
It's just, it's reflected somewhere else in here.
Exactly.
So, so when you, and, and one of my goals or objectives to get to this point was so that you can see it and those, those things like that would jump out at you. But then the, what did jump out at me, and Bobby already alluded to it, is the superintendent's office supplies and superintendent's other. Right now, 100% of that charge is going to Hampshire Regional. So sitting here at Norris, we may say, well, that's fine with us. But when you look at the numbers, it really isn't because any, any, for every dollar that ends up in Hampshire Regional, the town of Southampton is paying 55.33% of that. Versus if it gets allocated out across evenly, based on the population, we're only paying 34 cents on it, when, when in total. So I would, I, I'm glad to hear that this is gonna be discussed and possibly okay. So I, I went through and I did all that. And again, this is just me. I didn't, you know, I may have made some wrong assumptions and Bobby has not, she's just seen this tonight, same time that you guys are. But based on what I think should be shared equally and not just housed at Hampshire Regional, ends up in, and I guess I didn't put totals on here, but it's a, it's a 59, 51 or $59,000 swing. Because you'll see right now Hampshire Regional's at 549,000 and after you do the allocations, it's 498. So that's $51,000 that gets shifted around, which means, you know, every community would see a decrease out of the regional side. 6,000 to Goshen, 28,000 to us, 7,000 to West Hampton, and 9,000 to Williamsburg. But then some of us would have to pick up that expense over on the other side. And of course, Norris is gonna pick it up because we have the largest population. But for the $28,000 savings, we're gonna pick up a $35, $3,500 expense. So I'm not sure what Williamsburg's gonna think about this, but they're still coming out ahead under this equation, assuming that Bobby blesses all this stuff and the five districts agrees with it all. And it goes back to, is it fair and equitable at all, concerned from my point of view? And I, I think we're going in the right direction and we could go on with this, but I see some eyes glazing already, so.
This is really helpful, so thank you for doing this.
And if, I mean, if you want, if you want, Bobby, I can send you the Excel book and to Diana. It would need your endorsement to say whether you recommend we go this way or not, the numbers are correct. And then I think sharing this document with the five chairs.
Yep, that's a perfect.
Would probably help well with the next conversation that we were thinking, I was thinking of having with them.
Yep, that's good. No, I think it's good and I think it's good timing because I think this will help bring it all together, where everybody can see where the differences were and the things that really should have been broken out, not just the insurance and the travel, but the other, the supply lines and the, that sort of thing.
Okay.
Which would mean, you know, like I say, for some of the schools have the school committee other, that would mean putting a budget where we have not historically had one in each of the elementary schools for that certain thing. But as John said, that would make it more equitable.
And where's the school physician?
School physician is in.
I know we agreed, we agreed, well, everybody else agreed to only charge us the $500 we had, but this year's budget.
Right.
But I don't, is it a consolidated line?
No, that's in each individual school's budget. It's in the health section of each individual school's budget.
All right, not on a central office. Gotcha, okay. All right. Any questions? Is it all clear as mud?
So you said that there's a $50,000, you know, ish difference?
Yeah.
But I only see like.
Five, or 549 minus.
Yeah. There's only like 6,000 picked up or whatever it is here. So where's the other money picked up?
That was my question. How can you, if you're looking at the, the top block and the bottom block, if one of the decrease of $60,000 and the other one only increases by zero, basically, because if you look at the negatives and the positives, where does that money actually shift to?
Because it go, then goes and shifts over Chesterfield. So just look at Southampton's number. Originally Southampton was 423 and now Southampton is 455. So that, that bottom, that bottom adjustment is just of.
So I guess, so I'm just making sure the column that's hidden, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off off time. This is the same line of thought I had here too. The column that would be in between fiscal year '23 preliminary Williamsburg HRSD, that column that's hidden would in theory be the same as the column that would be on the far right of the page if it existed.
The grand totals remain the same.
Grand totals.
1.409 million.
Right. Obviously it should. I mean, that's right, but I'm just.
And the other thing is I just, I wanted, I wanted, again, thank you that, for allowing us to see this at this time in the process. I know especially to me, from Southampton's point of view, it means a lot not to be the caboose on the budget train.
No, I think this was great, actually. It was a good exercise to do.
So any other questions on this? And just as a reminder. Oh, did you? Sorry. Did you have?
No.
As a reminder, you know, Bobby's focus is getting the two regional budgets done by the end of February.
Yep, usually, so we have to have a preliminary voted for the two regionals in February and a final in March. So the, most of the bulk work is done for the regionals in February and then there's just some changes. So I am trying really hard to, to get the elementary schools done in tandem and get them done earlier as well. But, you know, life gets in the way sometimes.
It does, it does.
Especially that, like, I haven't even flipped my calendar from November yet because it's like, what?
If you blink, it's gonna be 2022.
No kidding.
So we probably, we're gonna, we are definitely out in the month of April for the local budget for us to see.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I just want to set the expectations. Yep, okay. All right. Thank you. Next we have, did you have another question?
When does the town expect to see it?
It's the month of April, I think, under the, the ordinance that we discovered last year.
And it may be earlier. I mean, in my hopes, it's gonna be earlier.
Under promise and over deliver.
Thought of another question.
Go ahead.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
In looking at the five district working group proposal agreement, there was, not the one we don't have in front of us tonight, but I remember reviewing it at one point, there was a discussion about changing the allocation process potentially from.
Yep.
5% or 10% off the top to be equally and then proportional sharing beyond that. What impact if that five district agreement, let's say there's a massive meeting of the minds next Monday, which is doubt, but let's just say there is hypothetically, or in the next month or prior to the next budget, what impact is that gonna have on these numbers and/or will it?
If some miracle was to happen and that was to pass, that scenario, I, I think it's unrealistic for us to force the change within this budget cycle.
Okay.
Would be to push it, push it out.
Fiscal '24?
Yeah.
Okay, that's, that's fine. I just kinda just wanna make sure.
Yes.
I did have one other thing too, if I may.
Sure.
I'm just gonna remind you that we are doing a bus contract this year.
Oh, yeah.
And I didn't know where you folks were at with, you had voted, I think, to look.
So we, we, yeah, we, we looked at it and the, mathematically, it, it makes sense for us to in-house the busing. But I don't see that being realistically, being able to accomplish that by the end of June. However, if, if you're, it wasn't your prediction, but if the information you shared last night, which was a community out east did, went out to bid and they saw a 20, 25% increase, so for Southampton, that'd be $125,000.
I don't anticipate that around here, but I'm just saying, that was a little alarming to see.
Right. Because they didn't, our contract has not increased, we have not increased our payments to them regardless of what they did individually for their pay increases.
Right.
Right? So, I mean, I know they, there, we, there was a document that came before the select board that showed that they, they had gone up to $25 an hour for starting wage. But they did that, as far as I know, on their own because we.
Yep, they didn't come back on the contract at all, so, yep.
So, so to your point, I expect something coming up here.
Right, exactly.
The only, on that point though, I would, I would, I don't know what the issue would be or the fallout or if it's even possible, but based on our enrollment numbers, and they have gone back up to pre-pandemic at Norris, the question that, that I would ask from this side, from, to the administration is, do we still, can we reduce the number of buses at all? Instead of contracting for 10, but that has a cascade effect, correct, up at the regional?
Right. And it's a timing issue, quite frankly. As it is already, we have a real timing issue with the elementary schools in the afternoon. So it's not as much of a problem in the morning, but in the afternoon, it's really hard for those buses to do their entire run, get those kiddos and get back to the elementary schools at their release time. It's really hard. So we have historically dropped two buses in Southampton. It was probably five years ago, maybe?
And that's the number we're setting out right now?
Right, yep. And, you know, we had done a lot of studies and that was when we started charging and then, you know, we only charged for the one year, there was a whole, but I don't see, I don't see that there's an ability to cut the number of buses. I, I haven't looked at it recently or studied it or checked to see how full they are or checked to see what the relationship with school choice kids are on the buses. I mean, it's certainly something I can look at prior, but I, I don't foresee because of the distances that they have to travel, that we would be able to reduce.
And when you guys looked at it last time, did that include, because I would think if we cut the number of buses, we would have to increase the distance to be eligible for busing versus everyone.
And right now we're at a half a mile? Is that right? Is it? Or one mile? What's the current?
Have to transport.
But it's any now, right? Any distance?
Not, not at Norris. At Regional, we do.
We have to transport over two miles, but we have one and a half is what we typically do.
Southampton's at one and a half right now?
Right, I believe we're at one and a half.
I thought you broke that with the.
Yeah, I thought we did too. Are we down to one?
Mm-hmm.
I think it was that administration's discretion.
Administration could adjust as it went.
I'd have to check. I don't remember off the top of my head.
But it's, and it's hard because again, you have the, like, that one street there, what's the name? Is it Coleman?
Gun Road.
Gun Road, that's it.
Yeah, it's not safe.
You know, even though they're right there.
Yeah.
It's not really safe for some of them to, to travel. So we have that in our district too, you have to take into effect.
Yeah. I mean, the, I mean, the plus side is, right, the way Southampton does it, the cost of the busing does not sit within the school committee. Right? It's, it's on the, the board of selectmen keeps it outside of the, of the school budget for calculations of that school spending purposes.
Right.
Okay.
It is one mile.
One mile? So I, I would ask for a 12% decrease and accept a 2% reduction. I don't, I don't know if you were looking for guidance on how to negotiate.
Well, you know how many bidders we get, right? I will tell them that they have to really sharpen their pencils because we're looking at other alternatives. That's usually what I say.
Yeah.
Keep them really sharp.
Bring the minutes. Bring the minutes from the select, or the school committee meeting where we said we're gonna open our own bus company and then pick up the bid on the contracts for the other four towns and make the money back for Norris.
Nice. Who's gonna take on that headache with the driver shortage?
Dylan.
I'll drive them all. Do we have, on the busing, do we happen to know if East Hampton and North Hampton has re-contracted since, since we have? Because they're, they use the same company.
Correct. I don't know when their bids are up. I know they're currently using them, but I don't know when their, their bids are up.
Just my concern and my, my panic on that is, is after watching my kid's bus driver literally have to pick up a piece of the bus off the road after the stop, you know, that ultimately, if we only have one bidder and that company is gonna be replacing a large portion of its fleet, that will obviously be passed upon.
And they have, and we do have language in the contract that the buses can't be any older than a certain number of years. And so that's always a factor. Because they, they can't have it, I mean, they have to have it for then a certain number of years. And I believe they got almost, a good, a lot of our buses are newer now. Because they just drove them in from Georgia, I think. They got new buses from.
Oh, yeah.
Obviously. Over the summer, so some of them even have air conditioning now.
Yeah. Well, that's on them, not us.
No.
We want windows open, air circ- We want windows open, air circulating. I've never, I have tongue-in-cheek, I haven't seen a MIR-13 filter for a vehicle yet. So, no way see. Okay. Are you, you good, Bobby?
I'm good.
All right. Role of school committee. Dr. Bobville?
Sure, so, MAS-C has lots of information and resources on their website about the role of school committee, and I really wanted to bring this forward because last year, I understand with COVID, everybody's roles were a little, quite a bit shifted, and you had a lot more responsibility on your plate than you probably wanted. And for elected officials, we would like it to be, we would like the, the powers to be restored, if you may, back to administrative shoulders, whatever belongs to ours. So, I just thought I would review some things with, some things with you. And at the high school level, they are having Tracy Novak from the MAS-C come at their January meeting to further give clarification about what's policy and what's procedure. So, that might be something that you wanna consider here as well.
Is, just, do you believe that that meeting will be via Zoom?
Yes.
At the time, and are they automatically recording the meetings?
That's a good question.
If not, could they record it, and then perhaps at least that portion? And then maybe that be shared with, with at least this committee so we could watch it versus taking up a section of our meeting?
We can check with Kim, but I know that they're currently not being.
But if it's within Zoom, somebody can just, whoever the.
If they state it in the.
I can also take really good minutes for you and just recap that if you'd like.
Well, I was just thinking if we could hear, versus having Tracy come from committee to committee to committee to committee and appear in person, if there was one.
That's a great idea.
I assume it's the same presentation she's going to give, and then maybe, just knowing how Hampshire Regional is, when it gets to the Q and A, we can just turn it off.
Was that tongue-in-cheek, too?
Yes, it was.
Okay.
Can't see me smiling underneath this mask.
That's a good idea, though. Okay, I can find out about.
Efficiencies in government.
That's right. So, ed reform of '93 changed some school governance authorization. So, the big things that school committees are responsible for primarily is the educational policies as well as the budget. So, when we talk about educational policies, you are also in charge of, and that includes the length of the school day, approving the calendar. Tonight, you'll be having the third read of the Code of Conduct because that's a disciplinary policy that you're approving, and you approve all curricula. So, at the high school level, that would include, like, program of studies if new classes were being offered, or if Eliza wanted to offer pottery and it's never been offered before, that would be approved by the school committee. Interestingly enough, school committees do not select or reject textbooks, but there's an argument to be made that it's tied in closely with the curriculum. So, if you really had, did have a disagreement with whatever textbook was chosen, we would need a two-thirds vote of, of this committee in order to change that. Clearly, reviewing and approving the budget and keeping the administrators and central office on task and following the budget as it is, is written. You need to have a public hearing on the proposed budget. Let's see, and you have authority to determine expenditures within the total appropriation voted by the city or town, and you know that you already approved warrants. So, as far as the hiring and firing, hiring, firing, and discipline of superintendent falls under your purview as well as the hiring of assistant superintendent, business manager, special ed director, nurses, school physician, legal counsel, and if we had an attendance officer, some school committees, some schools such as North Hampton have, have an attendance officer. So, when we look at that line item, what would happen with the nurses, you wouldn't technically, like, sit in on the, the interviews and decide what nurse you would want. Eliza and however, however she chose, whatever committee member she chose, as well as Stephanie Foss, would decide on a nurse final candidate and, and bring her forward to you for approval. And then we would handle the contracts on our end as well. Superintendents appoint athletic coaches. I only put this in because at the high school level, if there's ever any athletic issues or people aren't happy with the coach, and they always bring it forward to the school committee, it's really the superintendent's job. But the superintendent, although they appoint the athletic coach, it's really based on the recommendation of the athletic director and the principal. So, everything else with school district personnel falls on my shoulders. But if there was a personnel matter that would result, possibly result in legal, legal ramifications, I would bring that forward to the committee. But if something happened and a teacher was written up or was suspended for whatever reason for a short term, that probably would not come to your attention. And if it was the legal issue, that would be brought forth in an executive session. I just wanted to clarify that. As far as the principal's salary, I negotiate the, the contracts with the principals. However, school committees give a range for principals' salaries. My evaluation, consistent with the open meeting law, so that will be done in a public forum. Annually adopt professional development plan. In theory, at the end of the year, we would present professional development ideas to you for next year. You don't necessarily, honestly, I've never seen anybody adopt the professional development plan because usually, it's kind of developed as it goes along, just a couple of months before the actual date occurs. So, that generally, it takes quite a bit of time and planning to do. You do approve the school improvement plan, which the school council develops, and it's the school council's responsibility to really come up with goals and objectives for, for the upcoming year and act as an advisory board to the, to the principal. But really, if, if they've wanted one goal and Eliza was really opposed to it, Eliza would really have the final say. So, as far as the role of the chair, it's really whatever power the, the committee gives to the school committee chair. But pretty much, the chair decides on the agenda in collaboration with the superintendent and principal. And it's John's job to make sure that everything runs effectively in our meetings, that we stick to the agenda, and that all of our work really adheres to the district's mission statement. And there's annual tasks that we do, such as one code of conducts are approved, school improvement plan, the calendar, but that's all in my head, so you don't have to worry about those timelines. I'll make sure that they all happen efficiently and effectively. Mentoring new committee members, so if Dylan had questions about something, he would go to John. And really, you're the spokesperson for the committee in regards to the media, as, as I am with the schools. And clearly, if a principal wanted to speak with the media, I, I support them in that, but usually, they don't. So, that, that would just fall on my shoulders and the school committee chair's shoulders. So, that's just a quick, quick rundown of things. So, last year, I know you had a lot of COVID. Safety, health procedures, perhaps, that you voted upon that were probably more procedural than policy. So, but this year's a little bit different, hopefully, and we can focus more on teaching and learning and less on, you know, COVID protocols that were discussed at all the meetings last year. But, for example, if, if in the budget, Eliza, or if, if, I'm sorry, clearly need coffee. If Eliza decided next year to offer, like, to switch somebody's schedule and instead of having somebody teach third grade, to teach fourth grade, that's in her purview. So, if there's ever a teacher, a concern against a teacher or something, that would go towards Eliza first and then me. It would not be brought before the school committee. It is interesting to note disciplinary actions, there are some that could be brought up to the school committee level, but that is very few and far between. And I can get more information on that. I've only seen that once in my 25 years, and that was probably 20 years ago. Because I think parents know that if they appeal a decision from the, from the vice principal to the principal to me, the sentence could either be reduced or increased. So, that's kind of the risk that a family takes if they complain about a disciplinary procedure that's held against their child. I just wanted to share all that with you.
Any questions? No? So, I know it's not written here, and you said it, though, so, and we've been advocating for it in general. Principal salaries with a range. So, the, one of the things traditionally that, that's been frustrating is, well, there's the whole, past administrations, we don't need to get into, but it's, you know, for every job, there should be a job description. And, you know, I think it's, it's, I think there's one out there, right? You know, there's, there's one for a teacher, you know, the, you know, the state has their standards and to be licensed, and there's a framework for, for a building administrator, a principal, or an assistant principal. But I think from the committee's point of view, and, and this is where I would say this now shifts to a policy, is we, we should give you the tools to do your evaluations, and that would be, here's the minimum, here's the max, and you're free to do whatever you want as long as it's within these parameters. I.e., you are not authorized to give more than a 5% increase in any one year without consulting the committee because that has a budgetary impact. But if you stay under the 5%, then we don't need to see it until it, it shows up, you know?
Wonderful.
And working with that. So, I'd like to see something like that in place. And historically, and I don't know if this changed or not, but our assistant principal, and I might be wrong, so correct me, but I thought our assistant principal did not have a contract with the principal, but actually had a contract with the superintendent, and therefore legally was an employee of the superintendent.
So, we discussed this, and.
And if I, if I'm misremembering things.
Eliza will be evaluating Michelle. And did you write up her contract, or did I?
But the contract is with you.
The contract is with me, right. But you were like the designated to, to her evaluation since you see her every day, and I.
I, I leave that to you. I would just, I would want the same, I guess I think there should be a chain, right? You have.
The way that it worked in the past.
The assistant vice principal, or the vice principal evaluates the Paris.
Yes.
And then you evaluate the teachers.
And the vice principal.
And the vice principal, right. So, that's what I, I wanna see because, and then you evaluate the principal, right? Yeah, so, if that's happening, great. And it, but if it's formalized, and then I would, I would think because it's a contracted position, the same thing, there'd be a range in there and percentages. Because we wouldn't want to catch somebody on a good day and they give out a 78% increase and now sign a doc, I, well.
But it was a good day. It was a good day.
One day. Because on our point, our point of view, unless we catch it, which I don't, I won't necessarily, although I will give Denise credit, too, that payroll warrant is the same dollar amount every single two, two sites, you know? So, that's the only spot where we would see it outside of the budget cycle, if, if there was a mid-year correction or adjustment in pay. So, that, and then I agree with you 100% that we are policy and budget. And to that end, I think the, going forward, I don't, I, as a chair, don't wanna see them, but I would kind of like an annual certification or, or representation to the committee that everybody who's a direct report to the superintendent has had an evaluation. So, that the employee has had an opportunity to speak, you've had an opportunity to evaluate, and there is something written, signed by both parties, hopefully, in a file somewhere.
Yes, my expectation in every job I've ever had is that every employee in all the schools is evaluated annually. And for teachers, that all goes to the state. We have to record how they. What rating they get in each standard. So, yeah, absolutely.
And I'm, I'm extremely comfortable with how it works with the educators. Again, going to the past, when, when questions have been brought to the committee in executive session, and the first question I would ask is, what's documented, what's in the file? Because if it's not documented, it didn't happen. Well, we, you know, yeah, it's been three years since I've done the evaluation. Well, then you lose, they win, and.
No, I, I agree, and, and I know in central office, it has not been done annually, so we've talked about that. That's absolutely changing. But as far as, like, the central office positions, I think I would wanna discuss that either in an executive session. So, like, Bobby's contract in regards to salary or, you know, special ed director, those kinds of things, just to have a range of what you guys feel comfortable. And that way, when I negotiate with Bobby, who has a really good poker face, so. We can all be on the same page and be transparent. There's no surprises or secrets or anything like that.
Right, yep. Okay.
Just a point that was brought up at the Hampshire, at the high school level on this, which was a good one, is that while, my understanding was from what Kim Schott said, and if I'm, if this was incorrect, let us know, that we are involved in the hiring of, of those positions under the superintendent for, under the recommendation, but we are not involved in the discipline or termination of any of those positions.
Correct.
Okay.
And hiring is only, we, the superintendent, with the exception of the superintendent.
Correct.
All the other positions come to us with a recommendation, and we are required, we are not permitted to withhold our approval without justification. So, we can't just say, oh, Mr. Smith, no way is, you know, he, you know, he cut me off every, yesterday morning on the way to work. He's not getting my, it's, we can't withhold it for that.
Right. I get, it was just, it was that bullet point, which is hire terminate of the superintendent, assistant superintendent. But that, the terminate in that bullet point really only applies to the superintendent, so.
Yes, thank you. But if something happened and we needed to find, you know, business manager tomorrow, special ed director, God forbid, I know, I'm not jinxing anybody, and Bobby, we wanted to see you here forever. That would definitely be a, a, a committee made up of administrators, teachers, school committee members from everywhere. So, that would not be just solely my decision. That's a participatory decision to be made. But thank you, Dylan, for clarifying that.
All right, so I think as far as this goes for next steps, I think, although I'm not opposed to, to having Tracy come in here, too, I, I think if it's possible to get the recording.
Sure.
That would be good. If not, then we can, we can put her, put her on the edge. Have you, who's had their training? Have you guys gone through the training yet?
I think it should be coming up soon.
There's one in March, I think.
Remember, they had it scheduled online. We were even scheduled to do it online, but then we had, like, two huge meetings.
Trying to hire a superintendent?
They could send it to us, and they said they were gonna, and they never did. Like, it was recorded, but they never ended up sending it to us.
Okay.
Now, it looks like they're just starting to do them online, or no, in person again, as like a full day.
Yeah, can't mess with it.
Thing, but it wasn't out here, it was in the Boston area.
Yeah, yep.
There's one coming up. Someone mentioned it at the high school, and I think it's two Saturdays in March, and I'm thinking, that should be interesting, but I think it's out east somewhere, so.
Okay. Other business under new?
I actually do have something, and you're, I haven't really floated this by anybody other than the administrators, but this was brought to my attention by other area superintendents when we were talking about low teacher morale. Just because of, of mental health issues with students and staff. Somebody had the idea that if we looked at our time on learning, so at the elementary level, you need 900 hours. And if those schools that have more than 900 hours, you have to take into account, you know, potential snow delays, which could probably be like 10 hours, and you always have a little bit of wiggle room. But I'm wondering if you would support the notion that we potentially add two additional half-days, one at the end of Jan. half-days, one at the end of January and one in March, where students would have a half-day, teachers would still both work full days on those days, but in the afternoon, they could use it however they wanted in school to do their own work in their rooms. But I just think morale-wise, it would give them something to look forward to. We can absolutely, I think at this time, we could, it's six hours, I'm having Kate do an analysis of all the time on learning in all the various schools, just to double-check all of our work, but I don't know if you would support something like that or not.
Anyone?
I brought up too many half-days last week, so, I mean, last month, so I...
So the idea is that morale for the staff is low, and trying to bring up the morale for the staff to give this, the prep time or work time on their own terms? That's the idea behind it?
Yeah.
Okay.
They'd still be in school, right?
Right. Versus like supporting morale for, like, obviously, there's huge mental health crisis for children through the pandemic. So thinking about the morale of children on half-day, I mean, just...
Well, I'm thinking morale for everybody around, to be honest.
I know, I'm just trying to think of like, is it aimed to do programming to overall help morale or with children's mental health, or is it, I don't know, I'm just trying to think, what is the, like, is that a need that's identified that's been brought up to this administration by the teachers and the staff?
Yes. So teachers in our district and all of our districts have been hearing from other teachers in other districts who have granted them some time.
Gotcha.
And I think that's where it comes from. And then we were at a principal's meeting, and we were talking, and we, principals are, we said that there are some families who are calling their children in sick, but they're not sick COVID-related sick, they just need a break, you know? So it goes both ways. It wasn't really brought about for children, it was more brought about for the adults. And being able to kind of have that time in their classroom to do whatever they need to do. It's not planned professional development, it's not listening to the principal, it's not bringing someone in, it's not putting them on Zoom, it's just time to do whatever they need to do to catch up with their work and for their mental health.
Okay.
I mean, they're just really overwhelmed.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Were there any other options?
That was my question.
Or is this the only one to be considered?
In high school, we're doing like small little things.
But I mean, within the administrative...
That's what we discussed, but we're open to suggestions. We can, you're the only committee that I brought this forward to. I know. But I know that the...
So I, I'm not opposed, no, I'm in favor of doing something to help morale. If you are reporting that morale is an issue, then I take you at your word. So I'm not opposed to that. But additional half-days would go against my last two and a half years on the school committee, that I believe that we have too many half-days already, and we've had some polite battles over additional half-days. And I guess my question, I'm going to pose a question, and I'm not expecting an answer. I guess my question would be is twofold. What, well, no, the question would be, if I was to support this, then I would support this in lieu of the proposal for the premium pay that is coming down. Because the reason why, how that was pitched to me was that was to solve the morale, that was to help with the morale. And I know, you know, I know what the figure is for Norris, so am I being, I want to be clear, am I being asked to support both or one or the other? And if it's one or the other, I may go with whichever one it is. But if I was to support the half-days, then I guess I would need, I would need to know that there's support from the families and the parents, who are usually the ones driving the bus that there's too many half-days, to come out of winter break...
How often do you have staff meeting? Like, do you do it once a month?
Plus data meetings.
I know as a teacher, I love when they're like, guess what, your meeting today is, you get to go home today. Not, you get to go to work in your classroom. I know as a teacher myself, when they're like, I'm calling the staff meeting, go home and do what you want and relax type of day.
John, can you explain premium pay?
Didn't, you provided numbers and calculations?
I was asked to give numbers, I wasn't...
So under the ARPA...
I would, I don't think anybody knows what you're talking about. Does anybody know what you're talking about?
I have no idea. So I have the same question.
Well, I figured you were talking about ARPA, right?
Exactly. Under the, under the ARPA, allocation of funds, one of the appropriate uses of the funds is classified as premium pay. Now, under its strict reading, and we're very liberal here, so, under its strict reading, you're supposed to target municipal employees and/or, and/or first responders within the municipalities, all right, that are making less than $13 per hour. This is across the whole country, right? So the fact that Massachusetts' minimum wage is up there, it's really a mute point in this area. And there's a cap of $5,000 that could be paid as a one-time incentive for working during the pandemic, during that 18 months. So the final proposal hasn't come forward yet, they're still working on it, but there's a number in there, it's not as high as 5,000, but every single teacher who was onsite at Norris, not the ones that were fully remote...
Right.
Are in this proposal that I believe is imminent and coming forward.
Okay.
To the grand total...
That I hadn't heard anything officially, I hadn't said anything to anybody, I was just asked for the number, so...
I believe that the grant, the impact to us is $266,000. So...
Right. So can I ask a question?
Sure. Well, yes, but my follow-up question would be to that, and then I'll take your question, is I would also want to know what the, is Southampton the only community doing this out of the district? Because...
For half-days or for premium pay?
No, 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 the premium pay. Because if Southampton's the only one getting the premium pay, and everyone else is going to get the half-days, you know, I don't know. I guess, I didn't see this ask coming, so I'm not prepared for it.
And so...
I'm just bringing it on you, then.
I just want to say, if you're saying that parents should have a say as to whether they agree with the half-days, are they going to have a say about the premium pay? Is it, you know, is it one or the other?
Only because that's, that's one of the questions on the survey.
Oh, okay.
That's going out to all the residents. Do you support this?
What's, are you sure that number is correct?
The grand total?
Yes. I would like to see it, if I could. I mean, I know what I submitted, so I...
So are you...
I just would like to know...
Offline, I can give you the five people that are representing your interest at that meeting. And because, yeah, we had a...
Because if now, any, if no employee is going to make even close to $5,000?
Oh, no, everyone's maxing out. Stop. I'm sorry. There are two thresholds.
Okay.
Two-dollar amounts.
Okay. So...
Frontline first responder going into homes is probably going to be at the 5,000. Everybody else is going to be a little bit below that.
Okay. So, but when you say $266,000, you're not talking about just Norris?
No, that's the town, that's the town.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear. Because that makes a difference, I think.
A lot of towns are...
And that, that threshold of, for, you know, people who make a dollar, a dollar amount below the minimum wage, the way you said that, it's kind of...
Well, that was, that's the initial intent of why they wrote it in there, but there's enough language in there that you can...
You can go, so like...
People making six figures are eligible for this.
Okay. So any teacher that was working through COVID in the building, or any staff or municipal employee that was working in the building is eligible for this premium pay?
Could be.
Okay.
I mean, again, we're waiting, ultimately, the Board of Selectmen has to approve it. And it's in draft form, it's out there in committees, they're working on it, it hasn't come forward yet, and it's final thing, I'm just...
I don't think we should have like a half-day at Norris being kind of weighed up against this premium pay. I'm not sure I agree with that.
Well, if they're both, if the intent of both of them is to solve a morale issue...
Mm-hmm. Very right.
Perhaps we have a larger issue.
And I don't know if, I'm not sure about the people representing and what they're, you know, what they said, or as they presented it, but I would say that giving some people some money for working during the pandemic when many people were home and were not in the building definitely will help with morale. But I don't know if this was because of morale, or more of a, we appreciate all the work you did during the pandemic and going into the building when most people were home. You know what I mean? So I think that the half-days really is, is kind of on the same line. Like, we know that you've been working really hard since the first day of school, we know that you have had to do, go above and beyond and provide work for students who are home quarantining, maybe we're not live streaming because that would take a whole lot more and a contractual issue, but it's a lot. It's a lot of stress, it's a lot of work, it's a lot of, you know, aggravation and everything. And it would just be, it would help morale if we recognize the fact that you need time, you asked me for time, I'm going to give you time.
Mm-hmm.
So...
Sorry, can I...
Go ahead.
If you're still on that track, you can...
Well, I just, the January, January a half-day, and then when was the other half-day? Thought process?
Well, I was roughly thinking January 28th, and I want to say March, uh, March 11th.
So...
I think those are great. I mean, it, I would...
January 14th. Sorry to cut you off.
Because it's attached to a long weekend?
Yeah, because we already, I mean, again, I understand it, but I'm also thinking of families, because in January, we got Martin Luther King Day off, and then we got the next day off as well. So if you did the, and a lot of families go away that time anyways, so if we put the half-day just before that, on the 14th, that Friday's a half-day, and then they're going into their long weekend. Now, it's another day of travel, we're going to see spike in numbers and all this stuff associated with it, versus they go back to school, they go back to school on the 3rd, they're there that whole week, the week of the 14th, then they're out for two days, then they go in for three, then they go in the week of the 24th, and now they're only there four and a half days, we're into February, and then we're coming up on February break. It just, wherever, I, I...
Yeah, that, that's a great idea.
Where we can keep five-day chunks together for, not to do us against them, not to do families or parents, working parents against educators, I don't want to go down that road, but the fact is that a lot of families in Southampton are dual-income families, and adding last-minute-half-days, and I say last-minute because the calendar's already published...
I think the 14th is early, like, the 14th is early, not that we, I don't know how you can bring it to all the other school committees, but...
Well, two, three other, no, two other school, no, three other school committee meetings still have to happen for December. And I know the high school's advocating for this as well, and then with Chesterfield-Goshen, I would, I don't know, see if they want to have a special meeting just to discuss it, depending on how everybody else did. But I do, I do like the idea of combining it with the long weekend. I think our reason why we chose at the end of the month was only because we didn't have a chance to present it to all school committees, because we just really, we're talking about it today, we mentioned it last week in our group, and I, and I'll have the final numbers from Kate tomorrow, but I'm 99% sure that we're fine in all of our schools with the time on learning, that we've got that gap. I do like the idea with the long weekend.
And Julia, I'm sorry I cut you off.
I don't remember.
Sorry.
Yeah, I mean, in my head with this proposal, I have a couple of groups in mind, so I tend to think visually. And, you know, one of the things that comes to mind is all of the teachers that have served my family and, you know, the kids in my family, and what a wonderful job they've done, you know, exactly what you're saying, going above and beyond, meeting needs, you know, really working themselves hard to meet those needs. You know, another group is the kids who have struggled to learn through the pandemic, they, if there was extra time on learning, they maybe would benefit from it. And, you know, another group is parents that are still trying to recover from the economic impacts of COVID, and so, you know, having to take time off for kids that are quarantining, and then saying, you're going to have to take time off again because of the half-day when we have dual-income families. That's why I was interested in if there are any other options for boosting morale that would maybe click a couple more boxes. And I don't have the answer to that because I wasn't, you know, I wasn't thinking in that way, but I'm curious as if there are other things that might be available to us, tools that could help to achieve some of the same purposes, because all of those, all of those perspectives are good and right perspectives.
We can go back to the drawing board.
Yeah.
I just wanted to get your feedback.
Yeah, like, things that were family morale-boosting was the trunk-or-treat, like, coming to things like that, the idea of having this concert that's going to be shared with us, like, if there's any way to bring something like that, like, you know, bringing those types of things back for the spring to plan for, I think are morale-boosting. Not that, not in a way to provide more, like, I don't want to go over procedural things, but like policies, like, how can we encourage these more fun stuff that's been missed in the last two years that maybe staff have missed, too? Like, is there in a holiday party that had, or, you know, some sort of celebration that hasn't happened, that staff usually participate in, but has been skipped the last two years? Those types of morale-boosting is also important. But, right, I would support time to take a breath and breathe and catch up on stuff before a long weekend, too, if that is what seems to be the most wanted and desired, but...
Are there, are there any existing planned half-days where the staff are expected to stay, that perhaps the program could be canceled? So you could accomplish the same thing, but I don't know if you would still meet your PD requirements or whatever?
The only thing that we have coming up would be the two half-days in March for parent-teacher conferences, and then the half-day in May, which is a half-day for students, but a full day for faculty for professional development, and that's when we're planning the reunification drill.
Plus it'd be in May, so you're looking for something sooner?
We have a day in January.
January is a full PD day.
Full day, yeah. So maybe, maybe we can work something with that day, though.
Oh.
Perhaps abbreviated version. Good idea.
That's the Tuesday after Martin Luther King, right?
And then that would be a January, like, breather.
Great idea.
And then maybe March is kind of a long month.
Nothing month.
Nothing month, but maybe we do the March 11th and split the difference.
I like that suggestion. That would work for everybody.
And then some, at some point, I'd like to talk about in-person March conferences.
I was going to bring, I already wrote that down.
Okay.
Future agenda.
Future few other things, since you brought up March.
Thought on that, I know it's definitely not as, I completely understand the desire to have a half-day, kids out in the building, get stuff done. Is there any funding available through COVID money to do, I don't know, extended assembly would be the right word, or something where you could basically bring in an outside presenter to provide some sort of programming for groups of kids on a rotating basis to give teachers a block of time where their kiddos are out of the room for an afternoon? Now, I understand it would be all the teachers at the same time, but just, is there something that could be tied into children's mental health with COVID money to pay for that outside programming, come in and do that period, just to provide some, I understand it's not what you're looking for, it's just...
Right. Interesting idea.
Well, so we don't have any money, though, money ladies?
Well, that's why you said, but the CARES money, it either, it has to be spent by December 31st, and then, and then it triggers into ARPA, and I don't, the ARPA would fall under it.
But that's a great idea, Dylan, thank you.
So I, you know, to kind of summarize, I don't, I don't hear that anybody is adamantly opposed to it on its face, it's just, we want some more, but to that end, you know, you're starting the roadshow with us, and there's three other committees they get to. So I think, is everybody open to a potential 20 or 30-minute meeting later this month after the superintendent's made the rounds to the other committees, and perhaps defined or redefine the proposal so we could get a vote into, you know, if needed, if a vote is needed?
You brought forth great ideas, and I absolutely understand with parents working... You brought forth great ideas, and I absolutely understand with parents, working and having to worry about childcare, and I totally understand that. They're just great ideas, so if you think of something else, let us know, and, yeah, I will throw this idea around, but I do like the idea, if, if we were to go the route of a half-day in January, that it would be right before the long weekend. That makes, that makes sense. But if not, we can work with the PD day a little bit. We don't have much wiggle room, but we do have some.
Well, so, let me try this. I'll make a motion that's subject to the other committees approving it, that we go along with a half-day on that January 11th?
14th.
I think that's really.
January 14th.
Parents who already have work schedules. That's not even, I just feel like it's barely a month away, and that's a lot on parents' work schedules, especially if, for a kid who just had to quarantine for, say, 10 days, and now that parent's gonna have to take time off again. That's just, I just feel that the January date is really close. I get it, I have the teacher burnout myself, so I feel it, I live it, but I also live the parent's side, too. And as a teacher, that's me either having to take a half-day of work, or staying with my husband who works full-time, or.
So are you thinking?
I just think January is really close, I mean.
Do you have any objection to if they were to do a half-day on that 18th, where the kids are already out for the full day?
It's just me versus.
No, no, but what I'm saying, that.
I just feel that there's already a lot of half-days, and I just think there's other ways to go around.
But Allison, the, the students are already out of school on the 18th. That's that Tuesday, a full day of PD. If they were to go a half-day, the staff, half-day for that.
If we want that route, I wouldn't give them a half-a-day, I'd give them something, or we'd, we'd work with that, because we do have some things planned, but we could definitely utilize that day.
Would you potentially be agreeable to looking in March, being that now we're farther out?
I'm open to discussing.
Okay.
Well, thank you for your input, and I'm sorry that took so long.
Okay. Code of Conduct, third reading.
Okay. So, in your packet, unfortunately, the highlights that I highlighted didn't get copied, so I'm just going to direct you to the, so there were two things. One was, on the first page, under number six, administration will respond or acknowledge incidents within a reasonable amount of time, but no more than one business day upon receipt. That was the change, so upon receipt, right?
Mm-hmm.
And then, um, you also wanted an appeals process, so on the next page is appeals procedure for suspensions. That is all new right there.
That whole paragraph?
That whole paragraph. This is, I won't talk, sorry. And so, everything else that was added, student expulsion, Mass. General Law 71-37 each and a half, that wasn't in there before, but this is general, you know, law that needs to be in there, and Deanna suggested I add it for now. I do know that as a district, we are revamping our code of conduct with all schools, so right now, I'm just trying to get what we need for this school year to reflect what, what you wanted, but all that other stuff that needs to be in there, you know, legally, will be in there moving forward.
Eliza, I would take this bus behavior and writing a school bus in this paragraph, and I would put it right after the, right before your suspension procedures, I can just make a paper or something like that.
Okay.
To have it, like, under here.
Yeah.
Right after the, nope, okay.
Or actually, right before the, no.
Okay.
All right, so, I'll open it up for comments in a second, but this is the third read, so we should, theory, we should take action at this point, one way or the, one way or the other. Comments, questions, concerns, accolades?
I think this really accurately reflects the concerns I raised the last good week, so thank you for pulling that together.
The concerns that I raised the first two reads, I'll raise one last time, asking people to stand with me to vote no, based on the fact that, under this current policy, it would be allowable for students to put hands on other students and still continue to ride the bus without being suspended. Of course, it says that that's at discretion, but that means that there would be, it would be allowable under this policy for a student to do that and to not be removed from riding the bus upon completion of an investigation by administration. So I'm not comfortable with that. I think that if administration, upon investigating a complaint, terms that physical aggression was used by a student and another student during a bus ride, that suspension should be one of the appropriate responses. There's a part that says that the consequences should be logical, and so it, it just seems like having the consequence for something that takes place on the bus be somewhere that's detached from the bus is a little bit logically confusing. And so, having a consequence that's tied to the behavior itself seems more logical to me. It's also, you know, developmentally appropriate because students interpret, students, at least at this age, interpret morality in terms of consequences, and so if the consequences aren't logically tied to the offense, then it affects their interpretation of the morality of the action. So I am not in support of the policy as written.
Austin, I would just disagree with you a, a little bit, and, and just as far as, I understand we wanna be consistent with consequences, but we also, it's also written in a way to give some leeway and discretion to administrators who know their students, and I think discipline at the high school level is very different, like, you can treat a ninth grader or a 12th grader with similar things, but what if it's a, you know, a kindergartner versus a sixth grader? You have to think about their emotional level, adolescent development, cognitive development, does a student have an IEP? You, you have to think of all those things that factor in and make a consequence, and remember, these are all learning moments for our students. So I understand we wanna be, at times you wanna be punitive, but the idea is for students to learn, so it doesn't happen again. Ultimately, that's, that's really what I wanna see happen, and I think I totally trust Eliza and Michelle's judgment, that they can handle things appropriately based on all the factors that I just listed. But we can just agree to disagree on that.
Well, I think that that viewpoint kind of pits me against administrators, and that's not what I'm trying to say. I'm just trying to say I don't want to cast my vote in favor of the policy that allows that discretion to be used to allow those students to continue to ride the bus without having those behaviors adequately addressed, because physical aggression is something that is serious and needs a serious consequence.
Would, one, one, regardless of what grade, one student that comes in contact, inappropriate contact, with another student, would that, or would that not automatically be considered a major offense?
Not if a kindergartner or a first grader puts their hands on another student at recess.
Well, I'm, it's.
It's not a major offense.
All right, but out of bus, and a sixth, a sixth grader puts their hands on a first grader and shoves them to the floor, hypothetically.
That's, that's a big offense to.
That's a major offense, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So as it applies to, to the bus, not necessarily the playground, but the bus.
Right.
The.
It would be a defense everywhere.
Yeah.
Right.
And it only, and, and being a major offense only triggers the investigation, doesn't automa-, although I, I'm catching up with you. What you're saying is until it's resolved or until it's investigated, there should be a consequence.
No, I, I was saying you have to complete the investigation first, because you can't, you can't deliver a punitive reaction.
So while you're conducting the investigation, could they continue to ride the bus?
I mean, it's due process, right?
Right.
You have to do that.
So.
I think it's fair to do otherwise.
I mean, hands-on, the terminology you used, isn't one of the examples on the major offense, but you both just admitted that it would be. So I, I almost think we're at the same, I think we're in agreement, it's just not there, I mean, by agreement, I mean.
You said two different, you gave two different examples, a kindergartner putting hands on, and, and trust me, if, if.
Right, you said sixth grader pushing a kindergartner.
It's very different than a kindergartner.
Pushing a sixth grader.
Pushing a first grader or pushing a kindergartner, right? A kindergartner doing the pushing.
As it relates to the bus.
Different than a sixth grader, as it relates to the bus, in my mind.
Why?
If the injuries are the same.
But would you still go through the process?
We would go through the process, yes.
You would still go through the process and then say.
To find out, to find out.
This is a kindergarten.
Are there previous infractions? Have we spoken to you before? Have we called your mother before? Have I already given you a day off the bus? All of those things are taken into consideration, always.
Right, it would, right.
I think my concern is whenever you write a policy that has specific and definitive actions for specific and definitive responses for certain actions, you're gonna end up hearkening back to a period of educational punishment around zero tolerance, and that you end up with consequences that are, do not appropriately and properly relate to the actions and the, the events incurred, or, you know, what happened between two students. And I think the whole point of, of a policy is to set guidelines, but that ultimately we are putting our trust as a committee into the administrators and using their best judgment in how to handle those, and that we're not always privy to all the facts, that we're not always privy to exactly what happened, and we, we may not personally agree with the decisions that are handed down. Oftentimes, I'm sure the parents won't agree with it, but that we're living, we're giving that trust in there. And I think any, that, that's where I'm at, and I think this policy does a very good job of setting a rubric for where, what is a major offense, because remember, we're talking about major offenses in part one, which is then applied to the policy below for the bus, and, and gives the leeway with pretty much a strong recommendation that any physical contact is taken seriously. So, so I'm comfortable with it for that. I, I just don't wanna end up in the circumstance where we have a policy that says any physical contact is an automatic suspension, especially if you, especially if that contact started off consensual, playing a game of, you know, hand-slapping or whatever it is, and between two first graders that gets too aggressive, that ends up into a push, and that the policy says unwanted physical contact between two students automatically results in a two-week suspension from the bus. Now, we've tied administration's hands to say that these kids who were playing a game, one, you know, six-year-old got a little too aggressive with it, that child is now facing two weeks of bus punishment, and I think that's a vastly different situation from a sixth grader reaching over and smacking a kindergartner violently, and I think that obviously would warrant a much higher thing. So, so I, I understand your concerns, I understand that the reason we're having this conversation in the first place, and the events that led us to getting us here, but I think that this, this does adequately address your concerns. That's my feeling, that it, that it meets those concerns.
I think that those comments are hyperbolic in relation to what I was saying. I was saying, if it's termed to be, by administrators, is termed to be physically aggressive, not just hands-on, but it's physically aggressive, hands-on behavior, then it would be starting at a one-to-three-day suspension, not two weeks, I never said two weeks.
Again.
But I think that that's, you know, the interpretation as the person receiving those actions is the bus is unsafe, and it doesn't matter the age of the person receiving those actions, and it doesn't matter how it starts, they just know if this gets out of hand, if they decide that they wanna put hands on me, there's no one there to stop them, and no one cares, because there's no consequences, because they're still sitting next to me every day. So that's gonna be a narrative that the child is gonna come to in, in terms of that incident, and so that's why I feel like it's appropriate if, and again, that's where the interpretation is, it's up to the administrators to decide where, how they're gonna interpret physically aggressive, because it could be, it just started as a game, and it got a little out of hand, and so that's not termed to be physically aggressive behavior. So there is still discretion in there, but if it is termed to be physically aggressive, if there is injury to the child as a result of that episode, then I feel that it shouldn't matter if it's a first offense or if it's a younger child, there should be a zero tolerance on physically injuring another student on our buses. I feel like that's appropriate. I wouldn't tolerate that if it were my child or one of the kids in my family, and I'm not gonna say that it's okay just because it happened to a kid that's not in my family. I, I feel that it's, if I think in the perspective of, of parents who have been in that situation, I think that it, it's more appropriate to have a stance that zero tolerance on this particular issue.
I like that you added in with physical injury, that made it a little more clear to you, I think. It wasn't just a shove.
Where do you see physical aggression, though? I'm sorry to interrupt you, I'll say.
No, you're fine.
Uh, it says note on the bottom of the first page, certain behaviors are more serious, such as physical aggression.
And may lead to suspension.
And may lead to suspension.
Right, again, I think it's just, it's factors, it's factors to be looked at, and then these things need to be taken in the totality, in that it's impossible, and I, I don't believe it makes good policy across the board to set out something that specific, because you say, well, fine, with physical injury. Well, define physical injury. Is that a red mark? Is that a bruise? If there is no physical injury, does that automatically reduce it? So you have a child who doesn't bruise easily, or doesn't actually show markers of, of, of an injury, but was violently attacked? That, would that, you know, reduce it? So again, I, I don't, I, I appreciate what you're, what you're doing completely, and I, I just think that the policy here, I think leaving that leeway is necessary for there to be just and equitable punishments needed out, and, and to not constrain administration for, then we have to. That, that's my point.
I agree with Dylan, too. Like, I, I hear what you're saying, but I think we need to, I don't think we need to have a harsh zero policy, no room for, like, interpretation, and I think we set the policy, but we have to have enough room, like Dylan says, I think we need to let the administration do the job and do the investigation, and I don't wanna support having physical aggressive students on buses, you know, but I think you need to look at what's going on, and if it's a situation that warrants a suspension, it's gonna, that person's gonna be suspended. If it's something, if it's a kindergartner with an IEP that has autism and has, like, you know, has trouble emotional regulating, maybe there's something else that happens as a consequence that's more appropriate for that child, and these are the things that I think administration needs to decide. So we set the policy, if the language is in there, that a suspension can happen, but I think you have to look at an elementary school population, how varied is that situation is, and I think this policy really captures the whole picture, so I would support it.
Well, just to, you know, make a, a final point from my viewpoint, I guess, is that we're being, or I'm hearing a lot, trust administration. I'm still saying trust administration, we just put the, the process in different terms, such that those are terms that have to be considered in line with the investigation. So again, if it's, if it's, you know, kindergarten student on an IEP that has trouble regulating, then that's something that's taken into account when you're considering terming it as physical aggression, right? So there's still the ability to do that and consider all the factors, but again, I'm, I'm thinking more from the person receiving than giving, and so if we're disagreeing, I think that's where we're disagreeing, is we're maybe not considering what it's like for that student to receive that behavior, and it can be very damaging, and it can last longer than even a two-day bus suspension, so. So I still not-
Okay.
Anybody else wanna be heard? All right. So as, again, it's the third read, so chair will entertain a motion to either approve or reject.
A move to approve of the code of conduct as written.
I second.
As, just to clarify, as amended?
As, excuse me, as amended by moving, as amended by superintendent.
Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded. Discussion, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Carries. Next, all district working agreement. I trust everyone has read it and committed it to memory?
Every page.
Okay, good. I think we can narrow this down to there's two sticking points, at least from where we're, when we started this initial block. Where it got to the point that the agreement left the committee and came out to the individual school committees, there was a theory put forward by former superintendent Sullivan at the time of this cost allocation. And I'm gonna try and do it in, in, in brevity, but I can, I can go further into context. Example, and I'm not saying that I agree with 100% of this, but example is Bobby has to close five sets of books, and has to do five budgets. And it doesn't matter if there's one child in the school or a thousand children in the school, still gotta go through that whole process. So is that, should that allocu-, should her time, cost-wise, be distributed by pupil, as we saw earlier? Versus superintendent has to kinda do everything, and the more children per community, one could easily argue her resources are, are drained more in that community, I don't say drained, but used or forwarded to that community proportionate to the pupils. And it, so superintendent Sullivan did this big presentation to us based on fair assessment values of single-family homes and how the DOR doesn't equalize values and all this. Long story short, got into where, let's just state 10% of the budget and break that out across 2.5% to everybody, and then the remaining 90% allocated out by pupil. And that's ultimately what came down. My understanding is one community was intrigued by the concept, and their finance committee was willing to have a discussion. But the other three committees just denied it right off, right on its face value. So it came back, and our position had always been, you know, as I say as often as I can, it's the whole taxation without the representation piece that gets us, in my mind. The 1966 amended agreement of Hampshire Regional that allowed Southampton to enter into that is a longstanding agreement since it was written in 64, we joined in 66. We've been there all along, and it's a weighted vote, based on every 10-year census by the population of the communities, and that's the weight of the vote. And it should be noted that in 1966, when we entered into it, we were not the largest. In fact, Williamsburg was the largest and, and had the majority vote. And just over time, you know, the mills have gone and the farmland has gone here, and it's been rural, rural America in Southampton, and our population has gone up almost 8% in the, since the last census. Which now puts us at, I believe, a weighted vote of about 47-ish percent on, on Hampshire Regional. So the argument that I've been saying is, this is what everyone's used to, this is what we all do, just take that same vote and put it over here. And the, and the argument is, they don't want that. They want 20% apiece, and everybody has an equal say. So it's, it's almost like when we're dealing with the high school, we can be the House of Representatives, but when we go to central office, we have to be the Senate, where everybody gets the equal vote, and I think there's a disconnect there. That's my objection to approving the agreement, is that I, I, I don't believe that we should be the Senate when we're overseeing central office. If the founding members back in 1966 approved all this, and it hasn't been objected to since then, there's been discussion, but it hasn't been amended, and it's been working all this time, why would, why would we try to do something different? So that would be my push not to, that's just my position. You, you know, what do you guys think?
Can I ask a question? That's maybe I should've asked before, so Tiana and Bobby don't freak out. But why do we need an all districts agreement?
Because the, the Hampshire Regional agreement is silent on how central office is treated. It does, it, central office isn't even mentioned. There is, you know, I don't know how they did it back in 66, where the superintendent sat, if the superintendent was actually the principal of the high school. But there, within that document of, of regional, there's no discussion of central office or how that's handled. And I don't go that far back to know.
All I can say, it's been 25 years, that it's been the same. So that's the best I can tell ya. Okay, go beyond that.
It's like one of those unwritten rules, it's happened, and we just keep doing the whole, you know, insane, definition of insanity, right?
So when we-
It's also, sorry, that's also why we always have the, we're not gonna have it again, because Dr. Bonneville's not going anywhere. But it's why we always-
She promised, right?
She's-
And she's not gonna get in trouble either. She don't have to worry about the discipline part.
Whenever we have to hire a superintendent, we have that difficulty, cause there's no written document that says this is how you get five separate communities to agree on hiring one individual.
So the weighted vote just applies to budgeting?
As it stands right now?
Yeah.
The weighted vote is only when Hampshire Regional School Committee votes on any matter before that school committee, is by weighted vote.
Okay. So there's nothing governing how the five towns interact-
No.
-with our committees?
And that's the purpose of trying to write this document.
Okay.
So that we have a guide going forward.
Well, cause I guess my, my thought around asking that question is, you know, is it better or worse for Southampton to maintain the status quo?
I don't know how to answer that.
Okay.
I mean, I think the status quo right now, we're in, we're in flux. We are, we are, to use your boating analogy, we have no rudder. We're just relying on the winds to guide us along the sea here.
Which without a rudder, you would just spin. Yeah.
We're getting into nautical analogies now, are we, John?
It's getting late, it's getting late.
So I'm just curious, because now the discussions around shared costs are 4v1, right? So that's what I experienced when I went to the all-district meeting. So they're saying that, oh, you know, Southampton's this, you know, this big behemoth, and they're trying to push their, but it's 4v1. So that's why I feel like the weighted voting is necessary and needed, because if it's gonna be 4v1, let's make it fair, you know? So that we don't get steamrolled.
That's my argument, let's just, if, if this is how we're, if, and to me, this is maintaining the status quo, quote, is taking the unwritten process of how we regulate and, and share central office, putting it in writing. I do think the way we, we went about and hired Dr. Bonneville, and ultimately over multiple nights, getting to a unanimous decision, and no small feat of itself, was good. And I think we just, you know, and I think, and I said this in the beginning, the fact that we're, we're seeing a consolidated budget and that everything's, there never was anything being hidden, to be clear. There, there never was. It was just the way the information was being shared with the elected officials that have to make the decisions in five different communities with five different populations wasn't necessarily, I don't believe it was fair and equitable to all of them. But I'll go a step further and say, so I'll say, I will support the all-district agreement, provided that it's weighted vote. And I will even go farther to say the one exception possibly would be when, only when hiring a superintendent, that every community get an equal vote, regardless of their population. Cause I almost think that's the, you know, they have a school, they have, they have a town, for that sole decision, that that possibly should be the Senate role, you know, almost like the confirmation process. But everything else, the budgets and all that stuff should be over in, in the House, which means weighted vote. The alternative that I would support, and, and this is the first public meeting that we've had, and although if you listened or attended last night's select board meeting, you heard two other select board members speak in favor of this, is do away with this whole process. And then we seek approval to make Southampton the pre-K through six of Hampshire Regional, and be one whole regional, we would be one regional. We'd no longer would have 10 elected school committee members, we would only have the ones up at regional, they would have oversight, Norris would become the regional pre-K through six, the other communities could stay as they are. And if they ever wanted to join the region, Norris is here, and if we're, if we're too full, then maybe bring in their schools. But I don't see a way to get, to wait for those other communities to agree to do this whole thing. I think in Southampton's interest, we just need to, to move along here. That's my take.
I think it's hard to, to be at the negotiating table. Number one, cause I'm not the chair, so I can't really speak for the committee. But number two, because you go, okay, you don't like the cost sharing, how about a weighted vote? No, don't like that either, so you, you wanna take everything and, and run the show 4v1, and-
Give us 56%, 56 cents on the dollar for the bill.
Yeah. And so it just seems like, well, that's not very fair. And, and, you know, sometimes having, even if someone has more of the say, it's just more of, like, doing it via weighted vote is a more stable system than, than doing it any other way, because the interests are spread, rather than, it's harder to, you know, consolidate them.
Mm-hmm.
For lack of a better word, I guess.
Right. And I know it's very unpopular, but smaller government sometimes can be better. Instead of five elected bodies overseeing our schools, to try and get to one elected body, might be the right thing to do.
That would be the full-
Even though it goes against national standards.
Full regional option.
Yeah. So, and, and we don't have to wait for West Hampton, Williamsburg, Chesterfield, and Goshen to do it. We just do it as our own community, which would require us seeking permission from the select board to petition the citizens at the next town meeting. And, and I would start off with a non-binding question, does the citizens support this? Yes or no? And if it passes, which I think it probably would overwhelmingly, then, then we just, we march forward with, that's our directive. We, we, the citizens have spoken, and that's where we need to go. I will say that, that there will be consequences, financial consequences, to go through this, so we'd have to, you know, study this and examine it. But based on the five chairs meeting, at least, there is, there is a strong intention for the other chairs to bring this matter and, and I, and to force a vote at their committee levels.
On the agreement?
To be fair.
Yes.
Yes. So we can't, we can't do a pocket veto, veto, and stick this in the drawer and ignore it. They're gonna take their votes. And my guess is four communities are gonna prove it, Southampton's gonna object, and next thing you know, it becomes the law. So I don't want to attend the shotgun wedding. So let's do something here. So-
The analogies today.
So when you say Southampton could be a regional K through six?
Basically, we would put our elementary school into the Hampshire Regional School District. And, cause right now, if, somewhere along the reach five of that agreement, it says that Hampshire Regional was created for seven through 12. So it would require an amendment of all the communities to say, yes, we're going to expand.
Mm-hmm.
And it probably have, we'd probably have to go to state. But we're gonna add pre-K through six, but only for the town of Southampton, and/or any other town that wants to vote to come into it, and they could maintain their own school. And, and however that works out on their individual, like, you know, I know other communities maybe, their first concern may be, I only have 112 kids, as soon as there's a budget cut, we lose local control because it's controlled up at the district, and you're gonna close our school. I think there is wording that could be agreed and put in there hypothetically, that in order to close a, an existing local elementary school, a two-thirds vote of that population must agree to it, otherwise the district's gotta figure out a way to keep it open.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so that, I, I think there's ways to work around this. But I, I can tell you that if, if we bring this back, this, this is gonna be eye-opening, I think, for the five chairs. I, I don't think they anticipate that this might be our response.
So I'm not sure, we know for a fact that they can force us into an agreement? When there's no way, there's no governing document saying how we do that?
Well, past practice has been that nothing, other than hiring the superintendent, nothing requires unanimous vote. Past practice has been that the central office budget gets approved when Hampshire Regional and Chesterfield-Goshen approve their budgets. So I think out of, out of legal stance, if we sued, which we can't afford to do, but if we did, I think that the courts are gonna look to what has happened in the past. And we've gone along, we haven't objected to it, so.
And what's the financial impact of regionalizing the school?
Well, hyp-, I didn't say hypothetically, but potentially, you'd have to look at if the local committee was to dissolve and join regional, there are collective bargaining agreements already in place. They don't, I'm not a collective bargaining attorney, so, but my understanding is, they don't, they don't both go. There's only gonna be one. And it's gonna be whichever one is richer is gonna go. And based on the document I sent out on the wages, the Norris agreement is richer. So that means, that's where I foresee pushback. Because that means that everybody at the high school has to be brought up to that contract on the compensation wage. Now, there might be some offsets, because we only get 11 half-days and they get 16 half-days, hypothetically. You know, whatever that case may be. But I think that, I think the spread is $4,700. So $4,700 times how many teachers up at, just call it 100 to make it simple math, it's, you know, it adds up pretty quick.
And then we get tagged for whatever percentage?
Well, we get our, we get, yeah, but I mean, I'm not, from the beginning, I'm not opposed, the bill is the bill. As long as it's calculated fairly and equitably both, like the scenario I already gave out shows that Southampton's gonna pay more if, if we adjust these, but it's fair. Because it, it, you know, I'm not looking to try and force the money over on other communities. If we have more kids active in the schools, yes, we should pay more money. But if we have more kids in the school, we should, we should have a bigger say in the overall course that that school goes, the entire school, is my stance.
Just, I agree, just, just preliminarily saying. And I just did, quickly did the numbers, if we go based upon the allocations, if this were all spread out evenly under yours, but about 53%, Southampton total ends up paying for central office expenses, and what, about 56% now with the way the current allocations go. But, and here's the but to that, is realistically, for the five districts agreements, the only thing we're really talking about is central office budgeting and the hiring and the firing of superintendent, excuse me, hiring of the superintendent. We're not gonna mention the other F-word. So I appreciate the, academic isn't the right word, the, the, the idea that, you know, we're kicking in 53% of the bill and only having 20% of the say in how things are run. However, what is the actual impact that, that has, A, is, you know, what is the actual impact of this and the, and the idea of where are we really looking at the other four towns railroading Southampton? Cause I mean, you're not setting curriculum, you're not setting process, you're not really setting any sort of direction or goals of the school, of the district. You're, you're basically maintaining an administrative staff that supports the different schools across the district. So I, that's A, and I think the part, part two, letter two, would be, I'd be curious to know what percentage of the individual towns' budgets are currently going towards central office expenses? Meaning, I think the concern obviously being is that if there was a vote that were- Meaning, I think the concern obviously being is that if there was a vote that were disproportionate, that we did not have a weighted vote, you could have, in theory, three communities basically directing what the overall expenses are and affecting the individual towns' budgeting process, which I think is one of the major concerns that we're having here. If central office expenditures are a significantly larger portion of our budget than, for example, than the percentage is of Williamsburg's budget, I think that also does weigh into it a little bit, because they're going to be more concerned to keep costs down as well, because an increase, overall increase in central office budgeting is going to have a higher impact on them regardless of the allocations. You see what I'm saying?
Who?
So it just, it just does the other side of it to me, is, I mean, what's really, what's the actual pragmatic concern that we have of there not being a weighted vote?
So my other concerns or issues are, is that while we talk a good game, and we're going through a process now to get a single logo to represent our entire district, we are not a single district. We are five separate, distinct, individual, very unique groups. And our curriculum is not aligned. And that's no fault of our existing curriculum director, it's because the process from 1966, somebody thought was a good idea then, well, in 2021, it's not a good idea. We say we have a superintendent that oversees the whole thing, and try as Dr. Bonneville might, she's got to get five other elected bodies to agree on something. You know, there's a, I believe, is it the reading or the math program? One of those programs, it may be a change with how we're switching now, is not the program that ties into region. Williamsburg and West Hampton have that program, so now we're educating our kids with something, and when they get up to the high school, they're not even, it's not the smooth transition, it is coming from the other schools. Because there isn't a unified governing body overseeing the entire process. Now, possibly, we go through that whole unified thing, and we consolidate it all down to one committee, maybe we do away with the weighted vote. But the existing agreement that's in place right now that cannot be changed unless you get five, five separate committees to vote on it, says it's a weighted vote. That's what the law of the land is right now.
I understand. I, and for the record, I agree with you. But I'm just, I'm just trying to play out, because like you said, there very well could be a four committees approving, we now have a one dis, we have an all-district working group that is going to be driving the ship, and so that's what's curious, I guess, so you answered my question. There is some curriculum impact in theory of the five district working group. But, I mean, is there? Is that, is, does the current five district working group agreement as being presented direct curriculum across all five districts?
No. It's silent, it's, no.
So again, that brings me back to the first question, which is, what is the actual impact that we are concerned about? Because this, I think, needs to be expressed tangibly, and that's what I think, you know, and I've heard the other four communities saying is, what are you so afraid of Southampton? And I think, I just, I think we need to have a valid response to that, of when the question gets asked, what are you so afraid of? And while I understand taxation without representation sounds great, and if it scrolls across a Shire on TV, you're like, oh, that, you know, that sounds terrible, but what does that actually mean? You know, what is the actual impact that we would feel as if there was not a weighted vote?
So again, I believe...
Forget the regional conversation.
Well, see, I think that's the ultimate solution. That's where we go. We streamline, and that's what's in the best interest of the kids regardless of what community you're in. They're on the same playing field, it's the same rules apply whether you're in Williamsburg, West Hampton, or Southampton, and moving up to the Regional, because that's where everybody goes, excluding those that go to vocational schools. That's where you're ended up, and we should all be on the same path. And right now, it's little Fifthills, little Yorkshires fighting for themselves.
I like my little Fifthill, thank you very much.
And it's, I believe it's doing a disservice to the children to have this. And the fact that it's been a year and a half that we've been discussing this and fighting over this, in the middle of a pandemic, says to me that it's broken and it needs to be fixed.
I get you, and I agree with that, I just think that's a different conversation than we've been having. Again, I've only been in this conversation for a few months now, but it's a different conversation from, we're working on a five district working agreement that has, and the sticking point being cost allocations and vote allocations, to saying, forget that, we're talking about regionalizing through a process of applying to the state to get approval to do so. I just...
We only went to cost allocation during this discussion because it was flat-out rejected the weighted vote by West Hampton. They immediately said, we're not going to condone it at all, Williamsburg got on board, Superintendent Sullivan brought the cost allocation away as a peace offering that Chesterfield-Goshen originally was open to, and, which is fine, whatever, I mean, the cost allocation can be thrown out, because that was put in there as to try and find a middle ground for everybody, and it didn't work. So we're back to the original discussion that this committee got to, is, here's what we do at the region, we want to fit, we don't need to fit it over here, we have no written document. And I think that's the major issue is, so the, on the other side, the other communities are afraid, that we're just going to go in and we're going to level-cut everything, and we're going to zero everything out, and the field hockey team's going to be gone, and we're going to cut everything down. And that's, that's their argument for why we can't have the weighted vote.
But that's not paid, but again, maybe I'm misunderstanding this. That's not in a central office budget, though.
I know.
That's out of the high school's budget.
But listen to their arguments when we bring it up.
Mm-hmm.
And the vast majority of them don't even understand how the vote happens or is weighted at the regional level.
I understand that, but, so I just want to make sure I'm clear. The five district working agreement, as being presented, applies solely to, realistically, the two things it does is personnel in central office, hiring, and budgeting of central office.
Correct.
That's, you know, or, excuse me, and approving a district-wide logo if we wanted to approve it. But I think, I think if that's, if that's our sticking point, I think we can, we can move on. But hey, maybe a district mascot would be fun. Can we have a district mascot?
A tiger suit.
We already have a tiger suit. So my point being is, you know, I understand your...
So you're comfortable with equal votes?
I just, you know...
It's fine if you are.
So here's, here's a scenario, though, if you have equal votes. The other towns want to spend money, especially Williamsburg, right? You look at them, they have a newer elementary school, they're getting a public safety complex, they approve overrides. Southampton has rejected nine out of the past 11 overrides. So that's where I come to say that the town isn't willing to spend, because education is frequently in those overrides. So they say no to overrides with education in them, that's a fact. And so if they, they decide that we want a assistant superintendent who also has an HR function, because potentially that's what our district needs, they're going to say yes to that, they're going to approve it, and then they're going to send us a big bill for it. Then we're going to have to go and take a buzzsaw to the Norris budget, because that money has to come from somewhere, and our citizens are saying, you can't have any more. You can only do a 2.5% increase, and we're not going to approve any overrides, because historically, that's what's happened, what, almost 90% of the time.
So just, I understand what you...
The last time was a 2.5, we didn't get 2.5, we got less than that. Wasn't it less than a 2.5?
This last time, right?
Yeah.
0.97.
Right.
What's the school budget?
Right.
So just, since we're, since you brought up the facts, all right? So in 2021, Southampton raised $11.1 million in property taxes. Chesterfield, 2.5, Goshen, 2, West Hampton, 3, Williamsburg, 4. All right? It's already been established that we are, we are 52% of the population of those communities. We're raising an equal amount of money. So I would disagree that we're not raising as much money as we need to. I don't think the money is necessarily going to the right locations.
But that's a tax town.
That's, yeah. Yes, and that's a stance I'll repeatedly make, because Southampton, the average single-family home value in Southampton is $325,000. The next one to us is West Hampton at 295, 279 in Williamsburg, and then you really start dropping. Goshen's 246, and Chesterfield is 240. Go back to 2014, West Hampton was the largest at 269, and Southampton's been 260. So we've grown by almost 75% in our property values, which means our property taxes. So I do think there's an abundance of money. I think our priorities as a town may not necessarily be aligned on how it needs to be. But, but if you're going to, if we're going to make that argument, then we have to look at efficiencies. Switch back over to regionalization. The fact that we have, there are 100 and something volunteer elected officials combined within Southampton, right? And 10% of them are on the school committee between us and the Regional. And the fact that we have multiple meetings taking up multiple times and dividing, you know, the superintendent and, you know, everybody in central office, they have to go to five of these things. It's a meeting a week, the way it is. How much more efficient could they be if there was one meeting on the books where everything happened? How much faster could the budget get done? You know, I mean, it's efficiency that then doesn't require us to add additional staff, although I think the additional staff that was just added was overneeded, well overdue. And there's nothing, and so this is a mechanism to force the conversation, that I may not win afterwards, to get efficiencies in place, to reduce future costs so that we can reallocate existing dollars, get the kids the education they need, check that box, move off, and then deal with the rest of the community and all our other subtle little issues that we have. And I'll stop.
So if it was regionalized, just Norris, we're giving other towns a vote on Norris happenings?
If it was, if it was regionalized, the votes would happen at Hampshire Regional, to which, right now, Hampshire Regional is 48% of the vote. So we have 50% of the vote there. So if anything, since you need 51% to pass anything, right? If we can't, if we can't convince one community, or one, and it's not necessarily the whole community, one member of another community with our arguments to get them on board, well, then, then their way should go. But if we go down this road, then, and this is the push issue, is, it's up to us as a town to put, and everybody that's on Hampshire Regional right now is a dedicated school committee member, you know? They need to show up, they need to do that job, and just like we do it here, and be up there. Because if the five of them, or six of them are up there, then they have the vote, and they have the town's best interest in mind, and they've got, you know, every vote that comes up, you know? We have our say, and if we, and if we lose the vote, we lose the vote. But...
Currently, who represents Southampton on Hampshire Regional? It's Dylan.
Me, Jerry Jennings, Heather Pellegrini, Margaret Larson, and Bah...
Paul, no.
Bill Corrigan.
Bill Corrigan. And that's also the chair.
Well, I think we're getting a little off-topic, to be fair, you know? Because I think, I think the real issue, as I'm seeing this, if I'm trial-prepping this, if you will, we're going to trial, you know? That's not the question. The question is, the evidence that we have before us, what can we present and what's the best possible outcome we're going to get? If you're, if you're telling me that the other four chairs are going to slam this in the committee, they're going to vote on it, and we're going to be bound to it, regardless of what we want to say, and the weighted vote is a non-starter with every other, other community, and we're going to sit, we're going to stick on that without asking for anything else in the process, that's a mistake. I think if there's something that we can gain as a community out of those negotiations to get, to agree, to not do the weighted vote, because if this, if, if I'm mistaken in anything I'm saying and how this goes forward, then, then fine, you know, correct me. I understand your regionalization point. I think regardless of whether or not we want to have that conversation, is five district agreement going to happen, from what I'm hearing? Is that wrong? I mean, am I incorrect in that assertion?
No, no, because I'm... Not if we don't stay.
Well, so this is the other option.
So that's how I would counter the shotgun wedding, is to say, well, I'm not going to go to the wedding then. And then we're just...
So prior, yeah, so prior...
So you can't, you can't force the marriage.
Background information for Dylan. There was a study done, an analysis done, based on if Southampton reallocated the central office dollars only, could we create our own K, pre-K through six superintendency school at Norris?
No.
Well, the savings is $120,000.
Okay.
And then you, school choice or you tuition into Regional, if that's where they want to go. But when you get seventh grade, you can go to East Hampton, which, by the way, will have a new school, new high school online in two years. You can go to Westfield, if you're over on the hand and pound side, you know, whatever. I don't, I think that's the nuclear option to do that.
Well, but them forcing us into the all-district is their nuclear option.
Correct.
So that's what happens with nuclear proliferation, right? Is people have nukes to keep other people from using them.
So to your, to your point, though, I think there needs to be a middle ground, and the middle ground is not being said, this is everything we want in Southampton, regardless of what you say, we're not going to give you a single consideration, you need to accept this, and we're going to vote for it, and we're going to get dragged along to the dance.
What is the incentive for the other communities to come off a equal vote? That's, what are we going to offer?
I think we're at a stalemate, we're at a stalemate. Because I would, I would argue, and I'm not really sure what stance Margaret would take on this, because the question hasn't come up yet, but I would argue that it requires unanimous consent. That just because four communities approve it, and it has financial consequences, does not mean, you can't, because Dupree has ruled that you can't force a community if there's a financial...
Sure.
...attachment to it.
Well, right, I mean, I think, I think you can make an argument that absent a unanimous consent, you stick with status quo. I mean, I think that's, that's...
Right, so I guess that's where I'm going, status quo, if we say...
But that scraps the whole agreement, we're right back to the 1966 agreement, when there's no longer...
And then we move to Regional, we go to the next step. So the next thing is the Regional.
So I guess, and the question is, do we want to even push forward in this five district agreement? Is this in fact a tack that we want to even, you know? So I understand what you're saying, we're at a stalemate, we're bringing this up for discussion, discussion so far has been, we're at a stalemate, and here's two other options that we're not actually considering right now, but there are options that are potentially out there. The question is, are we going to break the stalemate? Or are we going to move a different direction?
Well, I would suggest that we go back and say, we like everything that's in the agreement, and with the sole exception of hiring a superintendent, which, yes, we agree, should be equal votes for hiring the superintendent, everything else should be based on a way of vote. And, and then we, I have said at the table, whether you guys agree with this or not, any financial decision would then require a two-thirds vote versus a simple majority, which then gets us to, under current numbers, three communities would have to agree, Southampton and two other communities would have to agree to it. Or all four communities, no, because even if all four communities agree to it, Southampton, you wouldn't get to that number.
Yeah. But the majority is also, right now in the negotiations, the majority, or the highest vote count you can have is 49%. So even if we continue to increase, we're never going to go over 49, because that was a contention point.
No, every 10 years, it's reset based on the census population.
But I think it's capped at 49.
No.
That's what I thought.
You thought it was capped?
Basically, for the all-district agreement. That's one of the ideas that was floated, was that...
It's not in the Regional agreement?
No, no community, no community can go over half, because then they felt like, well, Southampton is going to go over half, and then they're going to have full control. So we said, all right, all right, all right, we'll take that off the table, because we've been compromising the whole time, and they've been saying no to all of our ideas. So. Not going to that wedding.
Ladies? Any... You're good?
Yep.
I like the idea of having more efficiency and having this regionalized approach where our elementary school graduates are coming to a regional school program at the high school, that they have met the same educational requirements and have the same opportunities as the Williamsburg. You know, when Williamsburg was hiring more and we were facing cuts, like, that wasn't, we weren't equal. So I like supporting something that is, but I'm with Dylan, like, it does sound like two separate things, like, I'm getting, I'm a little confused where it sounds like there's two separate arguments, the argument of, let's regionalize and make this all an efficient model, so that all the kids have this equal educational, but I'm, I get confused with the, the voting, weighted voting and the stalemate and the cost-sharing stuff. Like, and I understood it was like, put in there is this compromise, the cost-sharing was this compromise to kind of get, move things forward, but didn't work. So coming back to the drawing board, I do think we have to look, okay, well, how do we, if our goal, I think our goal has to be, let's, how to make this a more efficient efficient process, let's make this a more efficient use of our time in a way that also gets our kids with the goal of equiv, at the same level once everybody hits the regional program, the high school.
So perhaps an alternative is to ask for a stay from the other committee. Well, Allison, how do you, what, what's your initial thoughts on regionalizing? For, against, or no, no opinion right now?
I'm not really sure what to think about it right now. I, I hear both sides, and I lean more towards what you're saying just because I've been in it for a while and hearing all the comments you've made, but it does have to settle at some point soon, so.
I just think it's wild for like a superintendent, business manager to have to, in stepping past, to like travel to like five different groups and present this five different times and try to get everybody in the same agreement and then come back around when it could just be such a more efficient process. Right? Like, I'm not sure how other gateway and other regionalized districts operate, their elementary schools versus their-
Your salaries are so much higher than every other-
Is that the difference?
District here, so that would cost probably more, half a million dollars more every year-
Okay.
-at least, and, that's a huge, that's a huge obstacle.
It's interesting, because when I look, I recently looked at just across the state data and wasn't blown away by salaries here.
But that was based on 1918 or 19, 1819 or something like that?
Oh, okay. Okay. Thank you.
So what you're, what you're telling us is, next time we go to the table, there should be no salary increases. I mean, it's just-
Let's keep the ship on track if we want to give-
Yeah, let's, we want to fight one, one battle at a time.
Right, yeah, we don't want to fight a multi-fronted war.
We got, we got another whole year out there.
It sounds like one of the things that we're up against is, is just the financial impact of bringing the other districts up to Southampton's salary standards, or what is already on the table. Like, there's a financial barrier there.
But, so I get that, but I don't think that should be the roadblock to prevent us from having the discussion. And if that ends up being the issue why other communities wouldn't go along, okay, at least we know, if we can resolve this financial issue, then over time, then we can come back to this and then come in. But I, I think the, the main reason to have the conversation is efficiencies and doing what's right for all the kids involved. Secondary to that is the financial impact. Because I don't want money dictating how well of an education we provide, if possible.
And I think the regional conversation's an interesting one. I'm, just to come back to what we're talking, you know, the agenda item, I think Austin was sending you back into the lines then on Monday, is that correct, the December 13th?
Well, this, I'll get to go to this one.
Lucky, so we're sending John-
He's just been filling in for me.
So we're sending John back into the lines.
Well, I'm going too.
I mean, I guess, what do we, what's the plan then as, as a representative for the committee on the five districts? What is the position that we want to take as a committee at this point?
Well, that's, that's what we need to get to tonight, is, is there a, is there a position, or do we just report back that we discussed it? We came up with alternative ideas, we want to, we're going to continue to explore them. And Southampton has, because I would want you guys to do this, Southampton has empowered or permitted the chair to communicate these reasons at the next chair's meeting, or ideas at the next chair's meeting.
You know, I don't want to have the discussion at, at the all district meeting about the regional. Regionalization?
Yeah, it's the wrong audience.
Yeah, I think that would make the whole meeting Because they would just be emotionally reacting to that because they can't control us and that's what they want to do. But the, I think that I would be interested to hear if they have any compromises to field. Because so far it's been, it feels like we've been offering ideas of how to compromise, and they've just been saying no. And so I would like to hear what they're willing to do to bring us to the table instead of us trying to entice them to come our way. Because that's not working, and that's where the stalemate's coming from.
No.
Is they want what they want, when they want it, and they're not willing to compromise with us.
All right. So do we want to, do we want to stand behind our current position that it's weighted vote, no individual community can ever exceed 49%, regardless of their population, and that's-
The two-thirds.
And that the, we, we, we continue to agree that the hiring of a superintendent must be unanimous regardless of, of the vote, regardless of the weighted vote. And the financial-
I support the financials being a supermajority.
Yeah, that's, we proposed that. I think that's in there, like in the drafts, yeah. Okay.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I think it'd be interesting, and I think the sense of, that's where we're at. Where, you know, and, you know, where, where would you like to see moved? I think it's perfectly, you know, to say to them, where would you like to see us moved other than equal votes?
Right.
And then cost sharing at this current rate.
Yeah, I'm, I'm comfortable with saying to them that the cost share is dead.
Not, not cost share, I don't mean cost share. Budget allocation, and the current budget allocation, they're basically saying, well, you want status quo budgeting with equal votes. And we're saying, we want, if you want status quo, there's got to be some other give. What are they willing to give on that point? I think that's where, that's where I'm comfortable with.
Right, and that's where we as a committee are comfortable in moving forward. Short of that, the, the other avenues the committee is willing to explore to, to resolve all this is, and you're the one who mentioned it at a meeting, is bringing up regionalization. Let's have that conversation. When's the last time it was had? I don't know the answer to that. But I, I just think there's, just the mere fact that there's no way, if, if you coach the statement, we need to explore regionalization because of efficiencies, because of the five communities, the five meetings, and the additional burden it puts on the existing administrative, senior administrative staff, that anybody can flat out reject that and not have a conversation about it because it says, I don't really care if you're working every night of the week. Which is not, which is not the case. I mean, you know, but-
Yeah, I agree with that.
All right. Anything else?
One of the questions that they did have was, are we willing to take walking away off the table?
Meaning separating from everything and making Southampton its own?
Exiting the regional agreement.
Like the opposite of regionalizing.
Right.
Can you clarify that? Is that just, that would be leaving the schools as is, but just leaving the central office services and getting your own-
Leaving-
Services such as superintendent, curriculum, business?
No, the, the exit would be leaving the region, leaving the regional agreement.
But that's like, isn't that two separate things? No? I mean, you can think that way, but I'm just-
Well, I, I think that's what was proposed to them, is that's what it says, you know? Again, after the, the multiple hits of, this is what we want, here, 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 there's no give whatsoever. I mean, right now, it hasn't been in negotiations. It's, it's been, here's our list of demands, and-
Yeah, they're taking hostages.
We want you to accept all these, but we're not going to give a, a inch anywhere here. And honestly, that's over in, in the regional agreement, and, and that's our only exit clause that's available to us, is to do that. We'd have to build a school, or, or, I mean, I don't, I don't know. I'd, I'd rather go with, let's try to bring us all together.